I'd like to call this council meeting to order. Would everyone please stand and Mr. Councilman Holt, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Aye. The reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I make standing for a moment of silent meditation or prayer? Thank you. I'll remind everyone to turn their cell phones off on airplane mode or either on vibrate. Could I get the, Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanky.
President Dawson.
Present. Okay, I got a motion for minutes for approval of April fourteenth, twenty twenty five, Public Health and Safety Committee.
No move.
And a motion for Mr. Fish, second for Mrs. Hines, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty first, twenty twenty five council meeting?
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Presentations and awards. We have the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau here with us.
Good evening, John Hunzberger, one fifteen South Michigan Street, Executive Director for the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you, Council, Council President, Mayor. Today, I just want to come and just share a few brief words with you from, from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is an exciting week, this is National Tourism and Travel Week, so we'll be celebrating that all year round, but it also, this is kicking off a, May is kicking off a significant time for us. This is when the quilt gardens will be planted here in just a few weeks, so the quilt gardens, as many of you know, are throughout Elkhart County. We have three here in Elkhart, sixteen gardens in total in Elkhart County as well as Shipshewana. They will be open, and I say that loosely, from May thirtieth through September fifteenth, it really lasts as long as the blooms will last. This is an award-winning project, and this year we will be celebrating our seventeenth year of planting the quilt gardens throughout Elkhart County. One thing of note, this is a CVB project, but it is entirely volunteer-driven and supported as well as a few city employees, not only here in Elkhart, but as well as in
Councilman Holt, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Aye. The reasons to the flag are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May standing for a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. I'll remind everyone to turn their cell phones off on airplane mode or either on vibrate. Could I get, Angie, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilman Holt.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Here.
Councilman Hanky.
President Dawson.
Present. Okay, I got a motion for minutes for approval of April 14, 2025, Public Health and Safety Committee.
Second.
And a motion for Mr. Fish, second for Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Could I get a motion to approve the minutes of April 21, 2025 council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Holtz. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations and awards. We have the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau here with us.
Good evening. John Hunzberger, 115 South Michigan Street, Executive Director for the Elkhart County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Thank you, Council, Council President, Mayor. Today, I just want to come and just share a few brief words with you from the Convention and Visitors Bureau. This is an exciting week. This is National Tourism and Travel Week. So we'll be celebrating that all year round, but it also, this is kicking off a, May is kicking off a significant time for us. This is when the quilt gardens will be planted here in just a few weeks. So the quilt gardens, as many of you know, are throughout Elkhart County. We have three here in Elkhart, 16 gardens in total in Elkhart County as well as Shipshewana. They will be open, and I say that loosely, from May 30 through September 15. It really lasts as long as the blooms will last. This is an award-winning project, and this year we will be celebrating our 17th year of planting the quilt gardens throughout Elkhart County. One thing of note, this is a CVB project, but it is entirely volunteer-driven and supported, as well as a few city employees, not only here in Elkhart, but as well as Napanee. But volunteers really put up the significant time and effort to plan, prepare, prepare not only the quilt designs, but also the quilt garden itself, the planting, the weeding, the watering throughout the season. So it is a tremendous effort put on by the community to ensure that the quilt gardens are beautiful, that they well represent the community that they're in. So I want to thank you very much. Because it is National Tourism and Travel Week, I do want to just touch on a few important facts about tourism and why tourism matters. I did present to each of you a pamphlet that we have created, and I have just a few more that I can share later, about tourism, the impact that it has. So visitors, this is from a study that we did in 2023. It's the most recent economic impact and visitor study information that we have. Visitors spend more than $560 million. That's direct spending in Elkhart County alone. These expenditures support thousands of tourism-related jobs. The last numbers were north of 6,000 tourism industry jobs in Elkhart County. It also supports municipal budgets throughout the tax, through the tax collects, taxes collected every year from visitor spending. That's more than $200 million in total. This is an estimate, more than $200 million. Locally, that is $38 million in the county. So significant. This also encourages entrepreneurship and business development through the shops and the services that visitors attend and visit while they're here in Elkhart County. Just want to highlight just a few, and many of you already know, but I want to just highlight a few of the tourism assets that we have here in Elkhart. From the Lerner Theater, obviously, the Aquatics Center, the Midwest Museum of Art, the New York Central Railroad Museum, as well as Hotel Elkhart and the restaurants and the shops downtown and throughout Elkhart. I want to thank you again for listening, but also receiving and celebrating with us this tourism week here in Elkhart, in Elkhart County. And I want to just end with one quote from a tourism leader, Mara Gast. If you build a place where people want to visit, you'll build a place where people want to live. If you build a place where people want to live, you'll build a place where people want to work. If you build a place where people want to work, you'll build a place where businesses want to be. And if you build a place where businesses want to be, we'll be right back to building a place where people want to visit. It all starts with a visit, and that visit doesn't happen without us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. Okay, Council Committee reports. Mr. Mishler, do you have a report for us?
Yes, thank you. The Health and Public Safety Committee met twice to, or once since the last council meeting to discuss proposed ordinance 25-0-10 and 25-0-11. And the committee sent the ordinances back to the whole council with a due-pass recommendation.
Thank.
That was a two-to-one vote count.
Thank you. Ordinance on second and third reading. Would you read proposed orders 25-0-15 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-15, an ordinance appropriating $165,000 from the federal grant fund for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
I got a motion and second to adopt this on second reading. Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mrs. Hines for adoption on second reading. Mr. Savatsky.
Good evening, Council. Jeff Savatsky, Director of the Elkhart Environmental Center. Under leadership of Rod Robertson, the city of Elkhart was awarded $121,000 through the Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant through the Department of Energy. In determining what projects we were going to do, we wanted to leverage our buying power and kind of get the most bang for the buck while benefiting the city the most. Of the three projects listed in front of you, the first one is installing solar panels on Fire Station 3 on Mishawaka Road. We, by doing this, you're going to, well, the city will reduce its carbon footprint, but more importantly, we're anticipating a savings of anywhere between $55,000 and $6,500 a year. When you base that over 30 years of lifespan of the panels, that's a significant savings, close to $180,000. By doing this, this project qualifies for a 30% solar credit or a tax credit. Because we are a municipality, it's, we are considered, we get a direct payment, a direct check back to us. So that increases our buying power through this, through this grant. The other project we'd like to do is install an EV charging station at the environmental center. To date, this will be the first and only charging station in the southeast side of the city. Otherwise, you will need to go to Goshen or downtown or north Elkhart. This will benefit not only us as our, we have an EV vehicle, but any renters that may be in apartments or homes won't have access to a Level 2 charger. This will provide that need for them. The third project on this grant is to purchase an EV UTV, utility vehicle for us at the environmental center and really for any other department that would like to use it and try it. It's a four-seater. It's battery, it's all batteries. Again, we're reducing our fossil fuel consumption and our carbon footprint. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
Could you state the amount awarded again? Because on our agenda, it says $165,000.
Yes. So what's this doing? This is allowing the controller to execute this agreement. This is a reimbursal grant. So with the $121,000 that was awarded, the 30% tax credit or direct check from the solar project bumps that number up. We're anticipating our only cost to be just under $6,500, the total cost that the city will have to pay. When this was written last year, the anticipated cost was zero because of tariffs on, off tariffs on, off. The prices have gone up a little bit. So this is why the $6,500 is really, is really new. But that is the only anticipated cost for the city.
Just one more quick question, Jeff. With the uncertainty going on at the federal government, how are we sure that once we do this, that we are actually awarded this, that we could continue with the program?
That's a great question. This is a two-week project. One week to do it, another week for weather and window. Takes about three to four months for the permitting process. So it's about four months. We're anticipated time start to complete. Once we start, we file with the IRS our project, and then they'll, they will do their thing, send us numbers, and we're registered. And once we're registered, we can submit this next year on our tax refunds that the Controller's Office will, will, will file. We're doing this project first for that reason. There's a lot of uncertainties. Once this project is done, we have the numbers through IRS, then we'll begin with the other two projects.
Thanks, Jeff. This is a great program. We're going to really benefit from it. The direct, the 30% comes back to who?
To the city.
To the City and General Fund, probably, or?
Yes, or, yes, I would imagine, or the controllers will put it where it needs to go.
All right, thanks. There's no, the, the federal government doesn't require a particular pigeonhole, does it, on these 30% grants? So if the city did something else, that 30%, if we did $5 million project, 30% of that would come back and we could use it for another?
Well, it's a solar credit, so to get this, it has to be a solar project.
Yeah, so I would only want a solar project. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone in the audience would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Seeing none, we turn it back to the council floor near the council discussion. Seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote?
Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion from Mr. Mishler, second from Mr. Hanky for third and final. Angie, would you read it by title, please, and do a roll call vote?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-15, an ordinance appropriating $165,000 from the federal grant fund for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant. Councilman Holt.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero on third and final.
Thank you. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-16 by title, please?
I'm thinking I'm losing my mind. Are we doing, we're doing 10?
10, yes. It looked like a six. I'm sorry, Angie.
Proposed ordinance 25-0-10, an ordinance establishing a rental inspection program for the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in the second to adopt this on second reading?
So moved.
Oh, yes. First of all, yes, we're going to move it out of committee. All right, I'm moving it out of committee. Now can I get a motion in the second to adopt this on second reading?
Motion to accept.
Motion by Miss Hines, second, by Mr. Mishler. Megan.
Thank you. Before we move into a statement on the ordinance itself, I do have a few recommended amendments to the ordinance that I'd like to walk through. Each of you should have a copy with the red line in order to follow along. All right, the First Amendment recommended on page four in section 167, I'm sorry, 161-07, section B2. Recommendation is to strike January 1, 2026, and replace it with July 1, 2026. This amendment will allow six months for property owners to register after the early inspection period before any penalties would be assessed.
Point of order here. You also have some red print on page two.
David, David, before we get to that, let's take care of this one at a time. Can I get a motion to adopt this amendment?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Mishler. Any council discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
There's changes on each page. Are you going chronological order, or?
Yes, sir. So there are two small grammatical errors that were, that have been addressed that you, that's the one that you're seeing there. I can read those in if you'd like me to.
Legally, you must, or we must replace the first ordinance with the second ordinance in its entirety, whichever.
I can read them in.
Thank you.
Okay, if you want to go back to that First Amendment, section 161-03, section C, request is to strike the word "the" before the word "building." That was an accidental duplication.
I get a motion in the second.
So moved, second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Ms. Hanky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Next would be in the title of section 161-06, correction to the spelling of the word standards. It was missing the second D.
Motion in the second.
Motion to accept.
Got a motion by Miss Hines, second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Next one is material. It would be on page nine. Section 161-10. It's a two-parter. In the title of section B, a request to strike the words "with the rules of fire prevention and building safety commission." And then in section B1, replace "if an inspection reveals that a rental unit is not compliant with International Property Maintenance Code" with "if an inspection reveals that a rental unit is not safe and habitable with respect to 161-06, and such condition is noncompliant with the International Property Maintenance Code." This is a technical correction to ensure that the correct language and code is referenced within the ordinance.
Thank you.
That's all under one motion?
Yes. Can I get a motion in the second?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Ms. Hanky, second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Next amendment requested on page nine, section 161-10, section B. Request is to add subsection four to state "an unsafe condition that is created by a tenant without the knowledge of the owner or landlord shall not be deemed a violation of this ordinance unless the owner or landlord fails to remediate the condition within a reasonable time of learning of the condition." This is a response to some of the concerns raised during the committee. This additional language will protect landlords from receiving penalties when they issue as a result of tenant action. For example, if the tenant is living in unhygienic conditions that results in a pest infiltration or a tenant that improperly installs a major appliance of their own. The situation would instead be noted on the inspection report and must still be remedied, but this is intended to work fairly with landlords when these situations are clearly out of their control.
I get a motion in the second.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mrs. Hines.
Discussion on the motion?
Top of the, discussion.
I don't know how you would measure such an issue. He said, she said, so you err on the side of the landlord? How would that be determined?
There will have to be some discretion entered, correct, by the building inspector and the person reviewing.
Some significant discretion. Hard to manage this one up. I would like to have input from landlords on this one to see what they think of this particular paragraph when that time comes.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, final amendment request. This is an additional technical correction to clarify the effective date and the public notice expectations on page 13. Section four, a request to strike the words "from" and "to" be replaced with the words "30 days" and add section five to read "the city clerk shall provide public notice of the passage of this ordinance by publication pursuant to IC 364-6-14 and IC 5-3-1-2H."
Thank you.
Motion to amend. Second.
Got a motion by Mrs. Hines, second by Mr. Mishler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Motion carries, eight to one.
There is one other posted on page nine of 14, first, first complete paragraph. It was a typographical, I believe, code process of the city of Elkhart. T-H-E-N was added then. Each nonconforming item may be considered a violation. Can you mention that for the record?
Yes. Thank you. My apologies. In section 161-10B1, add the word "then" before each nonconforming item.
Motion in the second.
Motion to amend.
Got a motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mr. Hanky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Well, thank you for indulging me in those amendments. Appreciate it. I want to thank you all for moving this important ordinance forward so that it could be heard by the full council tonight. I also want to thank everyone who came and spoke at the committee hearing last week and those who are here tonight to speak. Want to know that, want you to know that we hear you and we appreciate your thoughts. This statement, or my statement here, is intended to help respond to some of the most common concerns that we've heard. The proposed Elkhart Rental Inspection Program is a proactive step to protect the health and safety of people who live in rental housing. It makes sure that rental properties meet basic standards, things like working heat, safe wiring, and solid structures. These are things every renter should have, and good landlords should already be providing. It's not about overregulation. It's about making sure that people don't live in unsanitary or unsafe conditions. We've heard concerns about rent increases and increased homelessness. These concerns are unfounded. Some people worry that the cost of repairs will lead to higher rents or push people out of their homes, and we understand that fear. But the facts show otherwise. Cities like South Bend and Goshen have similar programs and have not seen rent increases or more homelessness as a result of their program. Conversely, our concern is that people who can ill afford living in substandard conditions continue to have to do so. We're rolling this out in a way that We're rolling this out in a way that should avoid surprise expenses. Landlords will have plenty of time to get ready. Registration won't be required until next year, and initial inspections will be spread over three years. During that time, the city will provide education and guidance to landlords on what to expect and what will be looked at. Yes, some repairs will have associated costs, but these are basic safety expectations, and renters have the right to expect that. We also heard concerns about privacy rights. In the state of Indiana, the courts have found no issue with respect to privacy concerns with proactive rental inspection programs. Inspections are done only for health and safety purposes. Our trained city inspector will not go through personal items, furniture, or ask about immigration status. Tenants will also get at least seventy-two hours' notice before any inspection and have the opportunity to have much more notice than that. In addition, the ordinance does allow the option of using an independent and qualified inspector in lieu of a city inspector. People have also asked why this focuses on rental properties and not on homes that people own. The answer is simple. Rentals are a business. Landlords make money from their properties and also receive tax benefits. Like any business, they have responsibilities, including making sure their properties are safe for the people who live there. Providing rental housing is a business, but it also affects public health. Just like restaurants need health inspections and childcare centers need safety checks, rental housing should meet basic safety standards. This ordinance makes sure that happens, fairly and clearly. Some have asked, why can't we just use our current laws, enforce our current laws? Well, current law doesn't achieve this goal. Right now, code enforcement looks at the outside of properties unless they receive complaints for tenants and are invited in. But many tenants don't know their rights, they may have disabilities or barriers that make it difficult to navigate the system, and they may be scared to speak up. Some fear that their rent will go up, or they'll be evicted as a result of making a complaint. This new ordinance and program takes that pressure off of tenants and puts responsibility where it belongs, on the property owner. We've also heard people say this is a money grab by the city. That is not true. The city expects to inspect about fifteen hundred rent units a year. That's because many larger rental communities already do independent inspections, and we will review and accept those in lieu of a city inspection. We think that many landlords will also register early in order to get the discounted inspection rate. In total, the city expects to bring in about eighty-five thousand dollars a year, which is less than what it will cost to run the program. With a five-dollar annual inspection fee and a sixty-dollar per unit inspection fee every three years, we're talking about roughly two dollars a month per unit. This isn't about making money, it's about protecting people. Some have said that this didn't work in the past. This ordinance is not the same as the previous rental registration is, ordinance. The city did pass a rental registration requirement to have better local contact information for property owners, but that version did not include a proactive inspection program like this ordinance does. We are confident that this ordinance provides the right balance of standards and enforcement to meet our goals of safer rental housing in Elkhart. We also heard that the inspection checklist is too long. And while the standards are the standards for building and for safety, we do commit to reviewing the indicators included in the inspection list and really hone in and revise to speak to the most crucial health and safety components, with the goal of getting it down to two pages. This program brings real benefits to landlords. Regular inspections help landlords catch small problems early, before they turn into expensive repairs. Keeping properties in good shape protects the building's value, and homes that pass inspections are more appealing to renters. This is especially important in neighborhoods that have been ignored for too long. This program helps those areas while also supporting good landlords who already care for their properties. It raises the bar for everyone, so well-kept rentals are rewarded and poor conditions are no longer accepted. This isn't a partisan issue either. Even Indiana, Indiana's Attorney General, Todd Rakita, has spoken in favor of stronger protections for tenants. So state statutes could change, so state statutes could change to reflect that in the future. We've heard from many other communities that face similar challenges, and we believe that, and they believe that these programs are necessary and effective. Sadly, we know that someone in our own community lost their life last year due to unsafe housing conditions. That cannot happen again. I want to remind you that this was prepared thoughtfully and with input from the community. We held two focus groups with landlords to hear their thoughts during development, and we listened to the comments that were provided last week and will listen to the comments provided tonight. This feedback helps shape our recommendations and the way that we move forward. This is good for renters, it's good for landlords, it's good for neighborhoods, and it's good for Elkhart. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel to discussion, Mr. Hanky.
So do you have any written statistics from South Bend that you mentioned?
On?
On the success of their program, that that no houses, nobody lost their apartment secondary to rental registration process?
No, sir, this has been based on anecdotal conversations with those communities.
So the landlord that was here last week and told us she has firsthand knowledge, how does your comment outrank her comment?
That's not a question, David, who outranks who? I mean, the citizens' comments are just as important as anybody else.
You can't discount what someone said firsthand by just saying a blanket statement, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Sure, I didn't say it discounted, we just have two different opinions.
You said the history of landlords is not founded, is what you said. So you're basically telling her that she was wrong. So there's the beginning. Let, let me just go down a road here. I'm trying to make sure that those in attendance understand what all is available. We've had books printed in two thousand and one, again printed, I think in Rod's first year as the mayor, I know we did under Tim Neese, probably Dick Moore, because they changed their name in the booklet, that, that gives rights and housing standards in a booklet form that taxpayers paid for, and they went out to everyone. In fact, Aaron and I each got a case each, so we could pass them out, I recall. We are one of twelve cities, level-two cities in the state of Indiana, that has a human relations commission.
David, David, what does this have to do with rental inspection?
I'm letting us know what is already available.
Okay, well, that's not germane to what we're talking about right here, so at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public.
That is, that is not fair. You don't get to determine what is germane and not germane.
I would like to let the public know that since there's so many of you here, that if you could limit your com, everybody's welcome to speak. If you could limit your comments to three minutes, we can get everybody, you know, we can hear from everybody.
Shut off their rights right up front and tell them they cannot speak on something that involves their. I don't care about that.
David, if you don't.
You are not allowed to speak at this time.
Appropriately.
I will open it up to the public. At this time, if there's anyone in the public that wants to speak with regards to this ordinance, please come forward and do so.
This meeting is under protest, by the way, and I will call Todd Rakita.
Thank you very much. Is anyone in the audience? If you want to speak, please come forward and do so. Make sure you sign in, oh, you have signed in.
Just going to sign in real quick.
Pathetic of the process.
Counselman Hanky, you are out of order.
I, I claim to be, and I'm going to stay out of order, thank you. Just because I'm the only Republican here.
Counselman Hanky.
David, be respectful, you are out of order.
You be respectful of the democratic process.
Counselman Hanky, that we're on to the public comment section now, please, thank you.
Because you shut my, shut my conversation down.
Whenever you're ready, I'll jump in.
Jump right in, sir.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to speak in favor of the inspections. I did not grow up in Indiana, I moved here about nine years ago. I've enjoyed my time here, I've been fortunate enough to live in two houses and rent two different times. Of the two times that I rented, I rented, and I've rented in the past from other states, had no issues. Luckily, I had no issues in my renting, besides a little bit of cigarette smell, and in both apartment buildings, buildings burning down. This is a big issue. I did not realize that, like, apartment buildings burnt down as often as they do, but of my nine years, both times that I rented, we had buildings, buildings, not just a house, not just a, a apartment, buildings burned down. Like, I understand that they, that being a landlord is an income for some people, but this is a housing situation. It's not an income situation. It's about providing the residents of the community's safety. And I, I feel like it is your guys' responsibility to look at the citizens, not the income. Look at the citizens and see how this is right for the citizens in providing protection for them and their future within the community.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Sir, just for the record, can you state your name, please?
Yeah, absolutely, Jared Elam.
Thank you.
Yeah, make sure when you come up, you state your name. And sign in, so we have it for the record.
My name's Kevin Foy, I live at three oh five nine oh North Shore Drive. I manage a lot of income properties. I own a lot of income properties, I own one two doors over. The bottom level's been set and empty for a year and a half, because we can't seem to get a handle on the homeless. I've reduced rent many times. I came in here in November, and I gave all of you pictures of properties for code enforcement. That was a year and a half ago. You sat right there, you, you, some of you weren't voted in yet, but you should have known what was going on. Nothing's happened to those six properties. So how, tell me how this is going to work? I had a house on Cleveland, I had two houses on Cleveland, that I bought years ago to provide housing, not to make an income, although I made an income. But it was housing, I'm a real estate agent. The house burnt down, I was under rental registration, I was never contacted, it was sold at that time. We need to have all the complete information so we know how to contact you. I show up, the inspector goes, oh, we didn't have your name. I thought the fire department, police, code enforcement, everybody was having the name. I had to pay up, pay for board up, I had to do the board up myself, because nobody, there wasn't an occupant and no owner, so the board up companies wouldn't do it. Cockroaches, bedbugs. I've got one that I managed, three years ago, we had bedbugs, spread to three different We got the tenant to sign a paper, saying he'd pay for it. We went ahead and paid for it, got it treated, he bugged out. We're stuck with three thousand dollars. They brought the bedbugs, his uncle walked in with the bedbugs. Didn't bother to tell us, he self-treated, even though I went there once a week to check on properties. Cockroaches, same thing. Had an issue with cockroaches, tenant. Kept getting worse and worse, had two different companies come out. We spent over three thousand dollars getting rid of the cockroaches, can't collect on it. I've got eighty thousand personally in collection, that I can't go after tenants. The judges don't help us, the city doesn't help us. So when you say I'm making an income, I got eighty thousand out there that I can't collect on. Some of my ones that I manage have got forty thousand. The house on Cleveland, I put sixty thousand in the house to make it habitable. New windows, new flooring, everything. I want to know how this is going to work, I don't see it working. I just, we talked about initially that it was going to be to protect the health and welfare of our citizens. We've got a lot of citizens in this town that are in fifty thousand homes. So, okay, we'll take five thousand homes, take six people per home. That's twenty-four thousand people you're counting on taking care of. What about the other forty-five thousand homes that are only occupant, that we need to protect our firemen and everybody else? That's, times six again, that's a hundred and fifty thousand people. I'm at a loss here. I came to the first two meetings, and I thought that would make a difference. And made some changes. When you say it's not going to cost that much, I've already got property owners that are saying we're raising the rent. I've got my own personal properties, I'm thinking about selling them. I thought I was going to take them into retirement here, I'm sixty-six this year. I thought they'd be my retirement estate. I'm not sure I want to keep them anymore. As you say, I'm making an income. I can point to every time I go into court, everybody's got their hand out. State law says thirty days' notice, I got forty-five days from the judge. So by the time they move out, it's sixty days, so there's two months worth of rent lost. Code enforcement, I've turned in properties before, nothing done. I know you're going to cut me off, so.
I'm not going to cut you off, but you've, you've had good times, but thank you very much.
I just know they're listening.
My name is John Brewer, I live at one zero one seven West Hubbard Avenue. I did a little bit of research into this, and one of the major studies that I noticed on rental inspection programs was related to Rochester, New York. That's the only one I could find major studies on. But Rochester, New York currently is only about fifteen dollars more a month on rent, according to census.gov. They've been having rental inspection programs for the last twenty-five years. So I'm kind of unsure as to how rental inspection programs are related in cost increases that people are concerned about. There may be other factors, but I'm very confused. And the general consensus that I've gotten, talking to my friends, colleagues, and neighbors, is fear and apathy. Apathy that nothing will change, and fear of retaliation. Landlords can be good people, they can upkeep their properties, there are bad tenants. But the general understanding of the experiences that I have had and that the people around me have had is very poor. There is a fear of retaliation after reporting issues related to maintenance. They might take care of the issue, but all of a sudden, they become consistently targeted with, well, this is, your yard needs mowed, and it's a normal length, and I think that, for me, the people are afraid. And this is something, at the bare minimum, to protect the citizens of Elkhart.
My name is Jay Little, I live at thirteen hundred Eden Street. When we first moved to the south side of Elkhart, my mom, my brother, and my sister and I, forty-five years ago, bought a house from a lady that had lived there for sixty years, she was ninety-nine years old, she sold us the house. By today's standards, we bought the most substandard house there could have been. She had never updated anything, anything. And we were property owners. You passed this, you're going to penalize people that do own properties. The other thing is, I never see any of you unless you come for votes, with the exception of Alex. I never see any of you come through my neighborhood, any of you. I'm looking at all of you. You know how much, how many homeless people we have down there? We have a lot of homeless people, and we have a house that's not registered, but there's probably thirty people living in it. I've said something to Mr. Code Enforcement back there.
You need to speak to the council.
Well.
Speak to the council.
I've said something to him. Nothing gets done with it. You don't come down, the city doesn't come and fill in, fill in where things have been, like trees that, big silver maple trees that have, like, by property, between three properties, we used to have fifteen of them, there's only one left, but the divots are this deep. The city doesn't want to come take care The city doesn't wanna come take care of those. I've had to come and bitch and bitch and bitch to the city council to get you guys to do it. And Mr. Fish, he doesn't even return my phone calls. He has me blocked. He doesn't even return my phone calls. He never has. And there is so much substandard housing down there that is owner-occupied. If you pass this, you're gonna cut your own throat. That's all I've gotta say about it. You will cut your own throat. Because I see it all around my neighborhood. Houses are, have 30 people living in them. 30. And it's because of this kinda stuff. Now, I have a duplex, I can't get CBD G money, and I tried to get it. I'm on disability. And my mom is 92. I'm one year off of 60. How many other people are like me? I know a bunch that can't fix their houses that are owner-occupied. So what does that mean? Does that mean that they're, that the owner-occupied people are next? I guarantee Mrs. Pierre, at 99, wasn't thinking about it. I remember as a kid, we had electric fence on our farm.
Sir.
That was like, that was like...
Your time is up.
That was like what we had in that house. Five amp fuses.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Please come forward. Sign in, make sure you sign in, so we got it for the record.
My name is Aiden Tramp. I live at 1508 Locust Street, over here on, just off of Bristol. I'm not very well-prepared for this today. I've never attended a council meeting. I've never been interested in this kind of thing. But when I heard what this was about and what was being voted on today, I thought it was important that I come out and I share my experience. I grew up around Elkhart. I've been living on my own here for around four years now. And some of the conditions that I have seen, especially in rental properties, are absolutely important. I feel that passing this will allow us to at least somewhat ensure that people have the bare minimum standard of living. I, growing up, I have gone through winters with no heat. I have lived in houses with faulty wiring that have started fires. And even more recently, over where I'm currently living, there have been multiple fires just in the year that I've lived there that have led to ambulance calls and people losing their housing temporarily. And I just feel it is important to have somebody standing up for the citizens of Elkhart. I look around the room, I see a lot of people in suits, a lot of people that are attending these regularly and a part of the landlord community and the political community. And I feel there is not enough representation for the general public. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Ralph Spellbrink. I've got a statement to read. Housing discrimination as illegal signs can be found in the area. City administration now has come up with a scheme to impose fees on residential rental property owners. Might this be housing discrimination? When this property owner went for a walk in South Central Elkhart, this is the old Roosevelt School area, at the time of the Elkhart County 4-H Fair one year, some properties with the public health hazard of abandoned tires were found. These can be a breeding ground for disease-carrying mosquitoes. Several people died across the state line in southern Michigan in 2019. Camera was purchased and pictures taken of these properties. After these were developed, 20 properties were found. When the property owner appeared in Elkhart City Court that year, King Charles only allowed evidence from the city employee who neglected his job and allowed these to accumulate. This is absurd nonsense. City property owners should not be subjected to this foolishness. My name is Ralph Spellbrink, and today is Cinco de Mayo.
Thank you, Ralph. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Please come forward, sign in, give us your name.
All right, my name is Jesus Garcia. First off, yeah, today is Cinco de Mayo, and I cannot believe my people are letting you guys use this. First off, you go to Mexico, I don't know how many of you guys have actually been to Mexico, we don't celebrate this.
I know.
We actually had a customer come in to where I work today, and, and he asked us, "Oh, what is Cinco de Mayo?" And I said, "You know what? I think an American went to Puebla, which is the only place they celebrate it, and it's just another holiday to drink, I guess, or whatever it is." But, yeah, it's September 16th for us.
Are you gonna talk about that, or are you gonna talk?
No, I'm sorry, I just heard that, and it's irritating.
I was, I was gonna say, there's a portion in the, where you can talk about that, but if you wanna talk about, do you have anything to say about the ordinance?
Yes, I do.
All right, all right.
Okay, so, sorry, it just, no, that's okay. It tickles my feather that my Hispanic community would go to this, would go to that, but not something as important as this, actually. Because this is important. You know, like I said, in the past, and, and with Mr. Michler here on Facebook, I really am glad to see that you guys have changed a little bit. I mean, as I said before, we, my personal properties, I don't rent with appliances included. Now, that is the tenant, whether they choose to move in or not at that moment. So therefore, I can't be liable for their personal property. You just can't. That'd be the same thing if, you know, just 'cause you don't like your neighbor's car, doesn't matter, it's not yours. And then you would be invading in the privacy, you know, that's private property, you can't touch it. So then I guess you say, "We're gonna be notified about this," and then what's the rule? So do I pass this on to them? Are we gonna kick them out because of it? Because they don't have the money to buy a new stove, new refrigerators? Like I said, most people don't even have $300 in their savings account. And it was on the inspection list, am I correct? I believe that's on the inspection list. So, you know, those are just food for thought, just, some people cannot afford that. Okay, and the way I keep my rents low is not, not giving a refrigerator and a stove. I can keep my rents that way, low. If I start doing that, and I have to bear the cost, so therefore, my rents have to go up. Maybe not tremendously, and maybe $20 to you, it's nothing. But to that person living paycheck to paycheck, it is. So people are saying, "Oh, rent shouldn't increase rent." They will. They will, I hate to say it like this, but they will. I am now offering my tenants, due to this ordinance, actually, "Hey, you want me to take care of the refrigerator and the stove? Because now it's a long-term investment for me as well? I'll check up $25 a month, and even then, that's cheaper refrigerator and stove." So for you to sit here and tell me it's not gonna increase the rent? I just told you I increase the rent if they wanna take it. And I'm sure there's a lot of landlords that are gonna do it. AC is a luxury. Heat is not. We have to provide heat. AC is a luxury. Some tenants are willing to pay more money for the AC. Okay, then we go to the, and I hate, children die, and I hate to say it like this, right, but nowadays, you know this because we have social media. My question is, what about the other children that died in a homeownership fire? What about the rental units that you're gonna be okay with just passing, "I'm gonna pay somebody, they're gonna come and inspect a couple of units, and then that's it"? Most of the fires we've had lately are from big properties. So I would say that they should be the same route, and they can afford a $650 inspection fee easily. We can't. 650, if I want somebody to do a private inspection, that cost adds up per property. That's just food for thought. We keep talking about everybody's safety, and I get that, but like I said, most of those buildings that have burned down was the apartment over by Walmart on Conroe 6, and I think multiple times, actually? I could, I could be wrong. So it's, and even if they do private inspections, it doesn't work. That's perfect proof right there. Then I tell you guys, I've spoken with, and I would say this, and I hate to say it like this, but I would rather live in Elkhart than South Bend. And if you're telling me that the inspections work, you still got better housing in Elkhart than South Bend. You still got better housing in Elkhart than Goshen, and they do inspections.
Thank you. Very much. And we're not celebrating Cinco de Mayo either, we're not.
Good evening, everyone. How we doing tonight? Okay, before I get started here, I wanna make sure that, you know, I don't say anything that might ruffle a few feathers. Everybody seems to be pretty passionate about what they, their opinion. So I wanna know if I gotta call for backup or get on the Kevlar. I mean, like, you know, hey, I'm up here just trying to make a point. I'm not trying to, you know, start a riot, okay? But more importantly, I came to the meeting last week, and I was kinda impressed with the results and the dialogue of the meeting that I heard. I'm here from a, more or less from a victim's standpoint. I do own property. Currently, I'm not living on that property, but nonetheless, I've been forced to live in a housing community, apartment complex. And so my concerns are that some of the program that you wanna implement, I think is a good idea, especially when it comes to saving lives and being more proactive about living conditions and the quality of life that I'm pretty sure most of us endure. So that being said, I wanna ensure that there is something, some contingency that's in this program that will create an oversight for the management companies, for the properties that's managed by management companies and a property manager, and then owned by someone in the distance. Generally, they kinda like out of the, out of the limelight because they're just in the background collecting money, so it seems. But my concern is because I'm living in this situation, and as well as for those around me, I wanna make sure that my quality of life standards don't have to be lowered because the expectations of where I'm living at and the standards that's required are not being met because of oversight and this and that. So I'm gonna try to keep this as brief as I can. I'm just gonna go down a list of things that I got, the issues that I have over the last couple of years that in fact were currently existing before I moved into the apartment. So this document was, was drafted on 10/4/2024. It was done by Bradley Company, which was the, is the company that took over the property management out there at Cary, Charles, Williamsburg, whichever one is, you know, they choose to go by. And so that's where I'm at with that. So I made this information available to them on October the 4th. The problems were there two years prior, okay? First thing that I have on my list is, was documented on, is in February of 2024. I got water running out of my ceiling from the shower. When you take a shower upstairs, it leaks behind the shower enclosure, comes down the ceiling, and then it drops down into the living room floor. Since February of 2024, I got a three-by-four hole in my ceiling to this day. The leak has been quelled, to say the least, but the hole is still there. The reason they won't come back and fix the hole is because they're telling me that I have to move the washer and dryer that's upstairs so they can access behind the shower enclosure. Okay, they came before, they cut two holes up there, but they never came back to do the repair. Okay. The third thing, I got mold under the carpet and black mold under the ceiling drywall in the living room, up in the ceiling where the water has leaked up there for so many years, and it hadn't ever been addressed that this is what has happened. I had electrical outlets that, that set off sparks in the kitchen. The GFI on, on the side, left side of the kitchen wasn't working properly. Outlet sockets are loose, wobbling throughout the apartment. Out, that's either during the, in the dining room, the light switch appears to have a short. The stove has been manipulated to where only two of the four burners will ignite. When you turn it on, you usually get the clicks, and then it ignites the gas. In this case, the burner, the igniter's had rusted through the top of the stove because it'd been there so long that my fiance, which is not my wife, she had to take and make a, like a carter key to hold the igniter up against the eye so that when you turn it on, it would actually ignite. Okay, let's see. Let's see, I didn't have any blinds when we moved in, so I went out and bought three sets of blinds. I'll take the hit for that. They did eventually come and replace the stove. That happened in, let's see, 3/11/2025.
Sir, you have about 30 more seconds. And you need to tell us your name, too.
Oh, my bad, my bad. I mean, I was scared to say it, I didn't wanna get shot. No, I'm just kidding. My name is DeMarco Robinson.
Okay.
And some of you already know, I've been knowing personally for quite some time. And the rest of you, I would wanna get to know as I get into this, this process here. So I do apologize for not announcing who I was in the very beginning. Excuse me for that. And continue when I'm almost done here. The carpets stained and throughout the apartment, they never were shampooed like they were supposed to. The water had been dripping down so long from the ceiling that it created a ring. Under the carpet, there's been white, I guess you could say mold, mildew that's been forming for so long that we just shampooed the carpet two days ago, the ring is already back. So it never, it never, it never goes away. The exterior shutters hanging off the windows, some are even missing completely. And it's just the frames that are left in the front of the building. That's the building I live in. And the conditions are so horrible to me that I, I, I don't even invite people to my home because I don't want them to see where I live at. Because soon as they pull into the complex, the first thing they see is, they have to check and see if they pulled in the Goodwill drop-off or if they pulled into Williamsburg. Because the hoppers are filled over the top with couches, chairs, beds, mattresses, everything but the kitchen sink, okay?
I don't mean to cut you off, DeMarco, but you are over your time.
Am I over my time? I didn't hear the music. My bad.
Thank you very much.
Okay. But hopefully, like I said, my platform is to get this knowledge out here, and I know all of you will be aware of this at this time, and then maybe something can get done, not only for my sake, but for everybody else that lives out there as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
In all fairness to everyone else, that was five minutes and 30 seconds, and everyone should be on that same, if we can't consistently hold the three minutes...
David, you are consistently out of order. You are not the president of the council.
Point of order.
You are not the president of the council.
That was five minutes and 30 seconds, so my suggestion is everyone has equal time.
And my suggestion is you stay in order. And if you're not called upon, please don't burst out at an interrupted meeting.
Councilman Hanky, we are in the public comments section of this discussion. We will return it back to council discussion following public comments, sir.
Shut me off the first time, I'm assuming you'll shut me off the second.
I wanna apologize to you for his behavior. So, sir, would you continue, tell us who you are?
I appreciate it, David. My name's Conrad Hostetler, and, and I, and I can appreciate what you've gone through, and it should never happen. I believe, though, we have the mechanism already in force called code enforcement, and, and if it was, if I was in your shoes, I would have called him a long time ago. When we have management companies, that's what happens. And, but I think if you, if you, I'd, I'd be down here tomorrow if I was you, and, and I think something would be done within a month because every time code enforcement has got on my butt, I got, I got going pretty quick. I don't pay fines, I, I get, sometimes something isn't brought to my attention, and then I take care of it. Yeah. But I, it's important that we, you know, we, we take care of the, the privacy. You mentioned privacy. And the land, the tenant, the tenants, it feels like may not have the same privacy. And they don't. They don't have, and if they do, then what we should do is give them an opt-out. Because homeownership, they have that option. They don't ever have anyone ever come there. They have that privilege that they never have to have anyone come into their home unless someone reports it that has been in their home. And a tenant should also have that same right and privilege. So I, I would request that that would be added to it, that a privacy option, if someone says, "Look, I really love, I want my privacy, I wanna preserve it, I wanna be like a homeowner, I've been here for 10 years, 20 years, and I don't want anyone in my house." I take care of it, and so please let me opt-out. And if you don't, that's really an, you know, that's saying, hey, you, you're, you're a little bit lower, and we have, we know how to take care of you better than you know how to take care of. And that doesn't feel very good, and it's also developing a class of lower class saying that, you know what? You, you have that, and I know last, last week, you know, you mentioned we do have classes, of course we do, we have classes, but that doesn't mean it shouldn't, we shouldn't try to fix it. We shouldn't, if, if there is a, a class problem, we should try to do what's right and, and not let it get, we should not just let things go. We should have things equal. And, and it's not equal to let, not let people opt-out. And if so, in that privacy issue, they should be able to opt-out if, if it all, if they have that, those strong feelings. Yeah. So the code enforcement, they can do their job, they can get the job done, so it's really a duplicate process right now by adding this. It's, it's a duplication. We already have it in force, and on the issue that was at hand, when, I think when we quit, I think you were talking about if, and I wish that paragraph could be read again. There was a paragraph that you had, that she had, and it was concerning, if, if the tenant does the damage, is that what it was? I think it was, is that right? And I give all my tenants a, a, a clean, good place to live, and in the event that they do damage, then I have the option, well, do I fix it? You know, if it's, if it's a rip in the floor, maybe in the vinyl floor, I may not fix that because, you know what? They're just very careless. They've ripped it once, they've ripped all of them. They just tear them up. They've got dogs, and they tear them up. So I can either victim or, or just, I'll just wait till they move. But in, under this, I'd have to fix it, and so then they'd rip it again, you know? But I, I, I think there should be, there's some real, a real provision that if I can document that I gave them a very clean and acceptable, everything was in order, that, you know, why am I forced to fix things that they clearly demolished and broke? And I know that's my job. I have, I consider all my tenants my bosses, and I, I do have to fix what they break, but it doesn't feel very good. And it doesn't even feel very good if you're forced to, because there are some things that are optional, I think, that, hey, you know what? You're just gonna have to do with a little less because you really messed that up. And so I, I think we need to look at that, that, that issue. We were talking, expand that a little bit, that if documentation, I'll be taking pictures of all my, my, my places when I give them to, I'll take a video of it, say, look, this is how they got it, it was in perfect order, perfect shape, and, and then if they tear it up, you know, in, in three months, wait a minute. Am I, am I responsible, seriously? So I think that's, that's, that should be expanded on that issue alone. I think that's, I've spoken enough.
Thank you very much.
My name's Conrad Hostetler, living on Aqua Drive.
Is there anyone else? Anyone else in the audience?
Hello, I am Gabrianna Grotzl. I live at 1638 Garden Street. Before I had the privilege of becoming a homeowner, I rented. It was the only option available to me. Our economy, I think everyone can agree, is pretty shaky, and it's looking like there's gonna need to be more tightening. Homeownership and the privileges that come with that are not available to everybody. I appreciate the amendments to the ordinance. I do think that people should not be held liable for things outside of their control. However, I believe, and I think most can agree, that the investment of property and renting is an investment. It is not a guaranteed outcome, just like buying stocks and going to the casino, two very differently framed things. We view one as more responsible and one as frivolous, but at the end of the day, once we make that decision, there is an element of chance that we are consenting to, and an element of risk that we are consenting to. As far as the privacy, that is one of the things that raises my first alarm bells when I read through the ordinance, is how can we ensure citizens' privacy? However, as a landlord, you can go into their private spaces at any time. So the difference here is the tenants are given 72 hours' notice. If there is anything that you are concerned about, anything sensitive, you have the time to do with that information what you will. The other thing that I think, that was the very first thing that came out to me when I heard of this ordinance is the fact that there is a power dynamic and a vulnerability when it comes to landlords and renters. Holding renters accountable for the outcomes of these disasters or conditions that they live in, when they do not have the power to make alterations to the structures and the systems that they live in, is irresponsible. And it does make an already vulnerable demographic more vulnerable. I personally know several people who have either their apartment complex had a whole building burned down, or I know one person who, she had, she lived in the apartments by Walmart, her apartment, she lost everything in a day. And she is the cleanest, most responsible, most rule-following person that I know. And yes, it's anecdotal, but everything, everything is anecdotal until it happens to you. Yeah, I am in favor of the ordinance, and I appreciate seeing the council and the people working on the language of the ordinance, listening to the concerns of landlords because they're citizens as well. And like, there, any protections that we can offer should be given, and I think that the amendments offered are a reflection that you are listening and that you are taking that seriously. And that is all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this?
Good evening, council. My name's Michelle Corritian. I am a resident of this city, which is, over the last 20 years, deteriorated like every other city, that is run as inefficiently and with lack of concern as any other. My issue with this is one person is a joke. Adding one more person, that's a joke. If you were gonna take this seriously, and I've known the mayor for 25 years, I've known Councilman Hanky for 25 years, and you. There are, we have had these discussions for 25 years. Code enforcement is your problem. Zoning enforcement is your problem. When you have council members that have blue tarps for roofs, that's a problem. That's called a code enforcement problem. When you have council members that run businesses out of their garages, that's a code in zoning enforcement. Because it's illegal to work a wood shop, just like it's illegal to have a mechanic's garage at your home. This is a code enforcement problem. This is not a landlord problem. Because quite honestly, what you don't know is what these people go through to try and recoup their losses. They go to small claims court. Do you know what the maximum they can ask for is? $6,000. So they take tenant A to small claims court. First landlord, Mr. Hanky, he takes them to small claims court. They owe him $6,000. The only way he can recoup his money is by going back to court, garnishing their wages, or taking their tax check. In the meantime, they go rent for Mr. Crabtree, who doesn't do his due diligence, and now he's stuck with the terrible, the terrible tenant. He has to go through the same process. It costs him money there, too. And $6,000 is not a whole lot of money for some of the damage that the citizens of this pig of a city do. When you drive down this town, do you ever look? I mean, honestly, do you look? Because one more person is not going to make a difference. But I will tell you what will, actually enforcing the law you already have. And if you were serious, because these people get hit with a higher tax burden than anybody else while they provide for a portion of our citizenry that can't afford to buy their own home, because Mr. Hanky's got a, got an eviction on them, so they have bad credit, Mr. Crabtree does, they'll go right down the line. There are tenants who work every landlord in this room, and they can all attest to it, and then they have to pay to go to court, and then they have to pay to go back, and then they have to wait. Because nine times out of 10, their tax return check has already been snatched by something else or somebody else, landlord number one, or child support. So if you are actually serious, what these folks behind me don't really know is how you pay $700,000 a year for 10 years to Tulsa Center. That's $7 million you invested in Tulsa that they're paying for. You invested in the Chase Bank Building, $700,000 a year is what you're giving Tulsa Center. You don't own the property, and you're giving it to a not-for-profit that doesn't pay taxes-
That is not germane to this ordinance.
Yes, it is, and I'll tell you why it's germane. It's their, it's their tax dollars.
Thank you very much, your time is up. Your time is up.
You know what, Mr. Jefferson? I've had enough.
Your time is up, thank you very much.
Get re-elected.
We don't allow that in the council chambers. We don't allow that.
Unless you're in favor.
Officer, if, if, if you're not quiet, I will ask him to remove you. Would you remove her from the council chambers, please? Thank you very much.
Because it's a First Amendment issue.
Would you state, would you state your name and?
Don't take that from him.
My name is Rebecca Green. I live at 3517 Wood Street. I didn't really come here with a plan. I am in support of this ordinance as a previous tenant in the city. I'd like to kind of just like bounce off of everything that I've talked or that I've heard about tonight. First was the issue of right to privacy and entering tenants' homes. They are not homeowners, and as my friend Gabby said, they, the landlords of these properties can enter at any time to do their own inspections, to make their own maintenance check-ins and whatnot, so I don't think that that really pertains to this ordinance. The biggest thing that I have heard about is code enforcement, which there are fines for, but it sounds like they might need some help. They're either like bogged down, or they might not have enough power, and I think that this initiative may be a really good way to provide them assistance in cleaning up some of these problem areas that we witnessed in our city. Another one for the people of Elkhart is health and safety. I have been in and toured many apartment buildings with water damage, visible mold, and this can cause chronic health issues. Obviously, not somewhere that anywhere should or deserves to with. AC is currently, but should not be, a luxury as climate change is creating hotter and more dangerous deadly summers. In a well-developed country and city, we should be able to provide safe homes and rental units, no matter the income of the residents. Once more, I've been privileged enough to rent safe and comfortable housing in the past, but in that search, I have toured places that tip-top kindly have made my skin crawl, and no human being deserves to live in those conditions. So that's what I'm gonna leave on that. I am in support of this ordinance, and I hope that it comes to fruition for the safety of everyone, and hopefully that the landlords can understand that it may benefit them as well in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm Susan Lanning. I live at 215 West Madison Street, Goshen, Indiana. So I live, yeah, I'm in Goshen. I grew up in Elkhart, and 63 years old. I was a little kid around here for years. I watched White Flight for years in Elkhart, Indiana. I watched people split and move out of the area. And what happened? Things went downhill a little bit. So you go down Elkhart now, you go drive down town, you see what's going on. It's taken Elkhart years. Well, they don't like culture, for one thing. So people come in and they move out. So several years ago, I came here, listened to this woman talk about, didn't even live here, lived in South Bend, talked about the apartment complex that went up over here. Because she didn't like the gunshots, she could hear back here. So she thought moving out here, just over by Martin's, was gonna help her with that problem, but it didn't. So what I'm hearing and what I've experienced is we're talking about slum lords. We're talking about people that don't care about other people, that don't care their living circumstances because they can do what they want to do. I'm not talking about the people I've heard tonight. And also, nobody knows behind closed doors what landlords do with their apartments and why, what their reasoning is and how they do what they do. Bottom line is, people deserve a good living where they live. If you are not accountable for that, when you can be, that's your problem as a landlord. And when you make it somebody else's problem, that's really bad. Accountability is a big deal, but like I said, one of the things I think it's important, my main point up here, is that I have watched Elkhart go downhill for years because people didn't want to be a part of the solution. I lived on the wrong side of the tracks all the majority of my young life. On the other side of the tracks, talked about us. There was no investment where I lived, and there still isn't. So people who haven't lived that life, don't know Elkhart, don't know. So if you're being accountable already for people and where you live, that's great. And if you're not, then you need to be accountable, and you need to be honest about it. And if you're not, then you need to be, you need to pay the price for that, because people deserve a good place to live. And I've been there, and I've watched it, so there's no place for BS. There isn't any. And the people that know the truth, know the truth, and they'll do something about it. Those that don't will keep doing the same thing they've always done. But what you guys are doing, and what I hear tonight, is a good thing. If it affects people negatively, they'll deal with it, in the sense of the ones that are supposed to be accountable. So what matters? What matters is that we're for the people that live here, that pay their taxes, that do what they're supposed to do. The ones that don't, then there's a consequence. Your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Good evening, council. My name is Brendan McCaskill, and I have been a resident of Elkhart for the majority of my life. I have currently, I am currently a homeowner, and I have rented in the city in the past. I know this is a touchy subject for many in the community. It's very nuanced, and I could share lots of personal stories I have, but at the end of the day, they're all anecdotal. My experience doesn't equate to everybody's. I do see code enforcement as more of a reactionary tool, and I believe that this ordinance would be a proactive tool. I feel like this would help catch problems in advance before, you know, families have to move into a building or a house, and they may not have the greatest fortune, they can't, they may not have a lot of time, and just grab whatever building they might have, come to find out there may be problems, there may not be. I'll keep it short. I do support the ordinance, and I do think that this is a good thing for the residents of the county. I understand that there are good landlords out there, just like there are bad landlords, good tenants, just like there are bad tenants. At the end of the day, I do see being a landlord as an optional, an optional job, if you will. I do consider it to be a business. I understand it provides a service for the community, but so do grocery stores, so do hospitals. Like, just because you, you provide a service doesn't mean that you should be exempt from providing the best service that you could provide. I'll end it there, but I am thankful that this ordinance- I'll end it there, but I am thankful that this ordinance is being considered, and I do hope that it is passed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
My name is Tom Butler, and I live at 209 North Third Street. Boy, what a great discussion tonight. I have been coming to council meetings in this city and a number of other ones for many years, and it's so neat to see such a discussion like this. If people, public's engaged, so many different points of view, so well-stated, young people that said they've never done this before. It's a great discussion, and I hope we can give people the time they need to have comments here and online and everywhere else, and everyone can chime in, because this is great. I, I'm in favor of this ordinance. I think it's a good one, but there's a number of changes that I think need to be made, and people have brought up a lot of the points mainly that I have been looking at and in studying the policy of this type of law. You know, it strikes me that it's really similar to like environmental laws, where there's like, there's a problem that affects people's health and well-being and their happiness, and the government gets involved and inspects things like pollution control devices and tries to make changes. Globally, that costs businesses $250 billion, but there's $1.3 trillion in damage that happens to the global environment of human activities each year. That, so about a billion, about a trillion dollars globally gets away with it. And I see this, I see the same thing is probably going to happen here, because there's a number of code enforcement issues that could be enforced right now that I see out there, and I see people in the community talking about here tonight that are not be. So I don't see this program as some panacea that's going to solve the problem. We have to do far more in terms of actual enforcement. Self-regulation, I heard it announced by the first presenter of this bill, that some of the larger landlords do their own inspection, and that particular information will be provided. There is no self-inspection that's ever worked in the history of regulation in any government anywhere in the world. That's not going to work. You're going to need to inspect the problems. But there is a lot of inspection that might not need to be done. You know, we look at the Pareto Principle, it's being 80% of things aren't the problem. Maybe only 20% of the landlords are the problem, maybe only 1% are slum lords. We know who those people are, probably from comments in the community. Retaliation, I, I mean, that's possible, I think, in a valid concern, but the amount of people who are renters who are here tonight presenting, that, that are presenting in the open in support of this ordinance, they apparently are not worried about any retaliation. And if there's enough competition in the community for, for housing, and the city can do far more of that, and also do things such as repeal restrictions on regulations against people being allowed to camp in tents or stay in their cars if they're homeless. You know, if we look at countries such as Africa where slums are, are, you know, various countries all over Asia, Africa, or other places where, where slums or smaller houses or tents is permitted, you don't have the kind of homelessness that we have that's even worse standard of living here in our own community in Elkhart. So that's something that we could do that would help make the, the effect of this a lot less, and also more events than that. So those are the main things that I see. I think we're going to have to do a lot more of enforcement, and I think that we're going to have to actually look at like, things like the discrimination ordinance right now. We have billboards all over the city talking about housing discrimination is illegal. It seems like it's a similar type of thing to me. There's probably a few incidences of that, and the city's probably investigated that, but the vast majority of, not every single real estate transaction, not every single rental contract is inspected by the city, right? But yet we still have a program to do that. I think we could go to something like that, where we could have the program, collect the money, but then have a legal system that protects the tenants and investigates, does forensic-type investigations or investigations such the detectives would do. Community service members can protect people's identities, whistleblowers, people can look out in the community, and protect the rights of the renters without having to inspect every single unit. That'll be more efficient. But we shouldn't have large corporations, and it's very much reminds me of the environmental movement, where you have laws that are created in a way that protects large corporations that are able to protect themselves with lawyers and all these things where the small businesses get sacked with most of the costs. And I think that's the same thing we're going to have here if we allow the big corporations to self-regulate. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and return to the council floor for council discussion.
We, we have some comments and emails that have been received that I need to read into record, please.
All right. Would you read those, Angie? Yes. Thank you.
This is from Pam Schultz. She's a Realtor for Century 21 Circle. Regurgitably, I have another meeting scheduled for tonight, but I would appreciate these comments being read into, into the record. I've been a Realtor here for over 40 years, and I want to see Elkhart flourish, as we all do. We have done this registration, inspection, fines process before, and it was not productive. The code enforcement was inconsistent at best and spotty and concentrated on properties that happened to be on the normal commute path of certain city employees. I remember standing in line to pay fees and reports, and frustrated city workers turning their chairs around and walking out the door early while fuming at the whole process. Many small landlords are self-employed, and their time is their money and stock in trade, thus costing them more and the tax fees. Meeting city people, asking tenants to give up their time and privacy and extra paperwork have a few upsides. I believe this process will cost a lot of money for Elkhart, make for very poor landlord relations, and furthers people's already complicated, complicated lives. Adding paperwork and additional fees and taxes to everyone only causes already scarce living spaces to become more expensive as rents go higher. We have a severe housing crisis in Elkhart, and increased fees only drive pricing higher, pricing even more people out of safe housing. Renters, owners, and taxpayers will all end up paying more. A complaint-driven process already exists with code enforcement. Fire doc, fire departments do smoke detector reminders as we are, we as responsible owners check our properties. Surely there are bigger problems to chase in Elkhart. We have sold many of our own and other properties in the city to avoid additional fees and hi, higher taxes for this reason. Please respectfully take the above comments into consideration. This is from Louis Ann, deputy citizen of Elkhart. First and foremost, I would like to express my appreciation for each of you and your willingness to serve the citizens of Elkhart. I believe that the proposed rental registration ordinance comes from a well-intended place wanting to protect tenants. Between Elkhart City Code Enforcement with the 311 app and the Human Relations Commission, there are already avenues in place for landlord and tenant protection. The proposed rental registration would increase government regulation, which generally leads to unintended consequences that harm those whom the regulation is intended to help. There are already a supply issue with affordable housing, and this government regulation may well exacerbate this issue. There, that's the word I'm looking for. Whoever said it, thank you very much. You have to read all these. So, driving up rental rates even more. Property taxes, as well as water and sewer rates continue to increase, which are already increasing rates for tenants. Government over-regulated, government over-regulation does not need to be added for further increased rental rates and potentially increase the number of individuals who are unhoused. Additionally, this government regulation may very well negatively impact those small investors who live and work in this community. The over-regulation could lead them to selling their properties to larger companies, property managers, who do not have the same commitment to the Elkhart community as its residents. As the public, at the Public Health and Safety Commission meeting, the gentleman who spoke about the poor apartment conditions is a fine example. The complex where he, this gentleman lives, is owned by a limited liability corporation with an address in Pablo Beach, California. Furthermore, the prospective rental registration could be questioned in courts in regards to violating the equal protection clause of the 14th Amendment by unfairly burdening, burdening landlords and tenants more than homeowners, individuals who rent mobile homes, and those who rent a room daily, weekly, or monthly at various hotels, motels in Elkhart City. The Fourth Amendment guaranteeing the right of a citizen to be secure in their, in their persons and houses without unreasonable search, without probable cause, could be violated. Lastly, the Indiana Code 32-31-1-2C, a unit may not regulate through an ordinance or otherwise of any of the following aspects of a landlord-tenant relationship, including leasing terms and conditions, could be violated. Because the proposed, proposed rental registration could impact the leasing terms and conditions by requiring an inspection, which may not be part of the leasing terms and conditions now. In the light of the above comments, I respectfully request that the Elkhart City Council either permanently table this proposed ordinance or make it a voluntary registration for homeowners, landlords, mobile homeowners, and hotel motels which allow daily, weekly, or monthly stays. Thank you for your willingness to listen. This one is from Amanda Lehman. I'm writing as a concerned citizen in favor of the proposed rental inspection. I have been a resident of Elkhart for the majority of my life, and have heard so many instances of neglect by landlords of their own revenue-generating properties. These properties are essential, are essentially businesses, and any other business criteria has to be met to get the green light to begin generating profit. As it stands today, landlords in our city can make money off of some of the most vulnerable in our community without ensuring the safety of these individuals, including children. One argument against a proposal protocol is that code enforcement already exists. While this is true, it's hard to know whether proper permitting for work within the home is sought out. DIY done by some, someone trying to save money can cause dangerous living conditions for unexpected tenants. Trust me, this home is safe, is not good enough when people's lives are potentially put at risk. In my opinion, what has been outlined in this proposal is not overbearing or much, asking too much. If someone buys a property with the expect, expectation of turning a profit, they need to ensure it is livable and safe at the very least. I only have about four more to read, guys. My name is William King. I live at Carlton Avenue in Elkhart.
All right.
I have resided in the city of Elkhart for 32 years, and I have some concerns regarding the proposed rental inspection program. The rental inspection program in Elkhart, Indiana, while well-intended, may ultimately harm the very community it aims to protect. The program's burdensome regulations and excessive fees could lead to increased costs for landlords, which would likely be passed on to tenants in the form of higher rents. This could be... That would be the word, thank you. The existing affordable housing shortage forcing low-income families to seek housing in already overcrowded and undersourced areas, resourced areas. Furthermore, the program's focus on punitive measures rather than supportive ones may drive small, local landlords out of business and lead for them to abandon their properties. This could result in a decrease in the overall quality and availability of rental housing, ultimately harming the community and program it seeks to protect. While intimately, instead of intimate, implementing this program, the city should consider alternative solutions that balance tenant protections with landlords' incentives. While working collaboratively with local stakeholders, the city can develop more effective and sustainable strategies to address housing concerns while promoting a healthy and thriving rental market. I ask that you vote nay on this proposed inspection program.
Paragraph.
All right. If this is passed, and the majority on record has condemned it, then I would respectfully ask for the resignation of the mayor and the sitting council members that voted to pass it against the taxpayers' wishes. In my opinion, to go against the taxpayers is to, is a dereliction of duty and sight of democracy. I am writing this today to voice my strongest support for the rental inspection program. As a committed advocate for safe, thriving communities, and someone deeply engaged in our community and committed to advancing equity and stability for all Elkhart residents, I believe this program is a critical step towards ensuring that every resident, regardless of income, zip code, or background, has access to dignified, safe, and healthy housing. Too often, renters are forced to endure substandard living conditions due to the lack of oversight of fear of retaliation. The rental inspection program creates accountability and raises the standards of housing across the city, not to punish the landlords, but to protect tenants and promote fairness. When done equitably and collaboratively, this type of policy does not divide. It reunites renters, landlords, and local government around a shared goal: safe and stable housing for all. By proactively inspecting rental properties, we address issues before they become emergencies, before mold compromises a child's health, before faulty wiring sparks a fire, before a leaking roof displaces a family in the middle, middle of winter. This is not about overreach, this is about responsibility. Cities that implement strong rental inspection programs see healthier residents, stronger neighborhoods, and reduce strain on emergency and service, social services. Thank you for your leadership and for taking this issue seriously. Let's choose progress, equality, equality, communities, community over well-being, over short-term inconvenience. Brienne Allen, Executive Director, Tolson Center. My name is Jorge Alfredo Ramirez, and I own a duplex property in the city of Elkhart. I'm writing to express my strongest support for the Elkhart rental inspection program. I believe this ordinance will greatly benefit landlords like myself by providing clarity on safety and property maintenance standards, ensuring I meet all requirements and offering security that my properties are safe and habitable for my tenants. Regular inspections will improve property maintenance, reduce vacancy rates, and help ensure steady rental income, while also providing tenants with safer, more comfortable living environments and lead to a higher satisfaction and long-term leasing, or longer lease terms. The program not only helps with compliance, but also protects landlords by identifying issues early, preventing costly repairs, and reducing the risk of tenant injury. Additionally, tenants benefit from knowing their homes meet safety standards, leading to improved living conditions and long-term stability. The initiative will foster a well-maintained rental market, benefiting both landlords and tenants while promoting a long-term growth and prosperity of Elkhart. Thank you for your time and consideration. I fully support this ordinance and look forward to its, its successful implementation. My name is Alberto Cortez, and I have been a resident of Elkhart for many years. I own properties on Main Street and in other areas near downtown. I am writing to express my support for the Elkhart rental inspection program. I believe this initiative will help me better adverse my properties while also ensuring that I stay informed about any updates or codes that may need to be improved. This program is a valuable opportunity, not for just me, as a property owner, but for my tenants. My commitment to my tenants is to provide them with a place they, they can truly call home. From my perspective, this sounds like this is a sound investment that will allow me to demonstrate that my rental properties meet the city's standards. This will help shift any negative perceptions from, some people may have about the downtown area, as it shows a proactive effort to maintain quality housing. I fully support this initiative, and I believe it will be beneficial for the community of the city and property owners like myself. Thank you for considering the program. I look forward to a positive impact it will have on our community.
Is there not one from Clark?
Are you done? All right. Thank you very much, Angie. I know I didn't give you that heads up ahead of time.
I did not give you the one.
All right.
They did not ask for that. They were just...
All right. Yes. Ma'am?
Can I ask you about...
Yes, you're the, our last one. Please come forward, speak.
You have one, you're the last one. Are you going to come back for a little?
No, I had closed the public hearing. When I asked her to read those, I said the public hearing was closed. Would you like to speak? Would you, who would like to speak? Raise your hand. All right, I have two more. All right. Where?
One here, two over there.
All right.
My name is Marsha Bechtel, and I have been a landlord here for 40 years. Probably a lot of you know me. I've tried to, because I live here, my motto is to have integrity and honesty and, and to treat people like I want to be treated. I don't care what race you are. And so this ordinance, I find, is not needed here in our city. I do find, I believe that it would be a hardship for my customers or any tenants who want to move to the city because of the additional charges. Rents are already high, and I do hear a lot of people come and say, "Please work with me. All we have is maybe a deposit or rent." They don't, they don't, can't come up with both of it, so I think it'd be a hardship. I believe that you should just be going after the landlords who are being reported for their places not being in compliance by the tenants, because I know they're reporting them to code enforcement. I've reported things to code enforcement about things that I see. I like to be eyes around the city and report things that I see, but the things don't change. And I call and call and call, and they still don't change. One idea that I thought might be good, you've had the handouts that people could pick up, but maybe they don't go where those handouts are at to get that information. What about... What about just either a postcard or a flyer to send out to all the rental properties? You know where they're at. To the, you know how many apartments there are in those buildings? Send letters out as generic mailing to all those people to let them know what their rights are and who they can contact if they feel that their properties aren't up to code, rather than punishing everybody. Let the tenants know what their rights are, just with a simple mailing. That shouldn't cost a whole lot when there's a lot of other money being spent here in the city. I've had a lot of problems with homeless people breaking into my properties. I call the police, they come out. They cannot even arrest those people because of the law in the city of Elkhart or maybe the state of Indiana that says that if that is a vacant house and they break in, they cannot be arrested. They'll give them a no trespassing warning that they say I even have to give to that person. And I say, "I don't feel comfortable letting them know my face to these homeless people. I don't know if they're dangerous or not." So, I think that law should change also to arrest people that are in properties that they don't own, that they've broken into. I'd like to see that addressed. I've had a lot of windows shot out of my buildings. Some of them are occupied, some of them are not. How you can find those people that are shooting these guns, I don't know. But you talk about, we need to repair things. You know, I'll have to repair these windows that are double-pane glass or expensive. How can we stop the guns from shooting out these windows? I believe that if you bring in this code, this ordinance, investors from other states will not be as likely to want to come here and invest in the real estate, knowing the steps that they'll have to take to maybe follow this ordinance. So, I think you're going to limit the number of growth and I think a lot of landlords here will want to sell their properties, but who's going to come and want to buy them because of this ordinance? I also wondered, Section 8 has a lot of properties here in Elkhart. Are you also going to have them, the landlords who are doing the Section 8 properties? Do they also have to do this if you implement it? Because those standards are already, you know, set there. So, are, are they going to have to do the same thing? I think it'll be a waste of money and time. So, thank you for listening to me today.
Is there anyone else? I'd raise your hand. There you go.
Good evening. Dave Blessing. I was here, well, the last two meetings on this topic and good testimony, good feedback. Obviously, I'm not, I'm voting against this, this measure for a number of reasons I stated last, last time, but also just riviate, riviate. There's only been a couple of people that were on this council that were here during those meetings and I found that was a little discouraging, quite frankly. My question would be, have you read the minutes from that last week's meeting? Have you read the emails outside of what's just been provided two weeks ago, three weeks ago? Have you read those emails from the comments that have come in? That'd be a fair question, because you want input. I'm not sure you've made yourself available, other than tonight, as far as a complete council. It has been mentioned about the other cities, South Bend, the inspection. They have that, you can gauge how that's successful or not successful. They didn't, they do not charge for their inspections. Or is the council open to not charging? If they're concerned about health and safety, take the money out of the equation. Something to think about when you brought up the, the comparison there. This thing was talked about, the checklist, and that came up just before the meeting last week. And here we are, we're saying that we're going to reduce it down to two pages. You've made some amendments, typograde, typos and whatnot. It'd have been nice if someone would have taken the time to put forth the effort in getting this down to two pages, so we can see what you really are going to talk about. We're going to pass something that we, we don't even know what we're going to be up against. You, you talk, but you don't have it made to possession. Eight pages down to two, okay, that's good, but which, which of the eight? You guys are trying to push this through? You guys should have had the amendments ready to go, so we know, know going, leaving this room tonight. But that's a fail there, all right? Just talking about pros and cons, I hear landlords, I hear residents, I hear both sides. You heard a lot of testimony from some good landlords here and you need to take that to heart. There's always bad landlords, but I'm telling you, there are going to be costs. You're going to take my time to go do somebody else's job or check this out, you're $60. I'm charging my time. Someone's paying that. Do I send the bill to you or do I send the bill to the resident? If I don't, I'm not avail, not there, is the resident going to be present? They're going to have to take off work to be present? Where's, where's the cost to them? 72 hours or what? Okay, last things happen, whatnot come up. I'm familiar with Section 8 as well. I know the program. So, there will be extra costs. We will change my, our lease so that we will be paid for our time that you're implementing on us and our, in our business. All right? Make it clear. It's not the 20 bucks, it's not the five bucks, it's what time you're going to impose upon me and my organization. They talked about the code enforcement. I think they're neat, and I've said this last time, have you guys inspected the inspector or the code enforcement's work? There's been a lot of questions thrown up, up in the air about this and you, do you guys have an answer for that? Where's the boss? Where's the commissioner? Where are you holding the commissioner responsible for these areas that have been brought up? You, you just kind of gloss over that. If it's the code enforcement that just up and down the streets, you guys ought to be asking the question. This public is asking you to do something about it. It was also mentioned on that wall there when, by, by the administration, that if we don't do this or don't, the residents don't do that, there'll be forced warrants. It's been mentioned in one of the emails. That is a red flag in my book. When you put down the words, "forced warrant," when invasion on our privacy and our business and whatever else to get your way, doesn't, that doesn't sit well with me. Residents have rights, we have rights. I think you need to be thinking about that. Input community has been good. Probably people will be losing their houses. It has nothing to do with retaliation, it has nothing to do with any of that, that silly nonsense stuff. We're beyond that. It's just dollars and cents and if you're damaging the property, you're going to go. You're not going to pay the bedbugs. You gotta pay it. I have an apartment right now that has roaches. I've had to inspect the second time today, two apartments in that, in that community. Who's paying for that? That person doesn't have any money, they had to go, and now I got things, I've had to do it twice, that's money out of my pocket. That's part of the business, I get it. But you guys don't pick up on that and now you're asking more. I'm not in favor of this ordinance. Oh, I know it was, there's something about fires, fires, electric fires, whatever fires. You know, we should have had a fire department. I, I thought about it after the last meeting and I failed to do that. We should have had to, you mentioned these things, but you didn't qualify them. Should have a fire department here. These fires are caused by A, B, C, D. I've had two fires, two fires, not caused by anything on my side, they were caused by residents. And guess what? You talk about a hassle, all, top to bottom, but even worse than that, the insurance company says they're out. And now it's on my record for five to seven years, I'm paying an interest rate, or insurance, probably twice the amount. I had, I, I'm innocent. The fire department was free. Fire department, you ought to qualify these comments, all right? Before you, you accept them.
Sir, your, your time is up.
All right. I vote against it and there could be, people will be thinking about selling. I will say that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else?
Hi, I'm Carrie Nichols. I'm a landlord. I inherited my properties from my grandmother, but I saw everything that she had to deal with and I decided I was going to do things a little bit differently and that is exactly what I've done. I have a very, excuse me. I have a very strong lease. I, they have to pay three months rent upfront, that doesn't include deposit. Because just like the other lady had said, you rent and then it takes all this time and this extra money to get them out. It's a lot of money and you don't get that money back. Very rarely do you ever get that money back from them, even though it goes through the courts. You just don't. You just don't. Not only that, when they leave, they've destroyed the house, so now you've got to repair the house. You've got to put the house back in, back into shape so that it can be good and that you could then rent it again. I'm also not one of those landlords that puts the cheapest in. I put the nice, medium-grade stuff in. I don't go high and I don't go low. I'll go right in the middle. Something that, you know, maybe it's not my house, but it'd be close enough to what I would put in my house, because I feel that people need to have a fair place and a safe place to live. But the laws are for the tenants. It's not for the landlord. Landlord's got to fight to get them out. The landlord has to fight to put the house back in order. The landlord has to fight the whole time. However, I do know that there are those slumlords out there. Okay, but you know what? We got 311 now. They can put the stuff on there, they can put where they're at, they can do that anonymously. So, it won't be any fallback. They can do that. And where's code enforcement? Guy in my neighborhood, used to hang out in my neighborhood for two hours. We got that changed, so now he's hanging out down in McNotten Park for two hours instead. Boy, that's doing some work. And there's, you know, I, I, I just don't understand how this can be pushed off onto the landlords when there's other avenues that could be taken to handle this as a good start, to get things under control. Because you can look at houses and you can see on the outside, a lot of stuff. And if it's a bad landlord, you can see it. Roof, there's no railings. Oh, code! You know, the doors. Multiple, multiple things can happen just from the outside and that could be the first step. And once that's done, then it can continue on further with other types of the code enforcement. I am 100% against, against this ordinance, 100% against it. And talking about fires, I've had one. Extension cord hooked into an extension cord hooked into an extension cord. How's that my fault? All I have to say.
Thank you very much.
I've been a landlord in Elkhart for 20 years.
Will that mic down so everybody can hear you?
I've been a landlord in Elkhart for 20 years. Okay, I've had other properties that I've sold off, two of them recently. I had one house fire in one of my apartments and it was what, one of my tenants that had five dogs, wasn't supposed to have any animals. And she had her kids locked from the outside of the door in their bedroom and they were playing in their diaper bag. She had a lighter in the diaper bag and set the curtains on fire. She got all this money from different places for her house fire and what she lost and I still had to fix it. I had multiple people that I've, over the years that I've taken to court over the, trying to get money from them and evicted them and stuff, and that does take time. And you, there's no guarantee that you're going to get your money back. And when they move out, if you don't have an address on them, you got to hunt them down. Okay, so, it just, that's not fair to us. I, there's a lot of money that I've lost over the years, a lot of money. And I didn't, you know, right now I'm down to a minimum. I've got relatives in my apartments, okay? I got people that I know that I can trust in my apartments because I got so tired of these bad tenants. And you can't judge them. You don't, you could, they could talk a big game. You, you can't judge them. You don't know what they're like. And everybody just has to have a place to live and they will absolutely take care of your property. The next thing you know, you're evicting them and fixing it up again. I have pictures of all my apartments, every one of them that I've rebuilt. And I have a lot of them that look better than what I lived in. Okay, so I'm going to tell you what, this is not right. I take pride in my apartments. I, my family lives in there. I have a girl that I've raised since she was 12 years old in one of my apartments or one of my houses and she's getting ready to have her fifth child. I take care of my tenants. I just put a furnace in last December in there and this is, I am charging her less than what I'm paying out for all the money that I've spent fixing that house. I'm not trying to, it's not their responsibility. I'm trying not to pass this on, okay? But you guys got to understand this, we're not all bad. You got some out there, go after them. Why you coming after us? I'm not trying, I understand you guys want inspections. I was hit by code enforcement once. And it was because of a faulty switch and then he found a few other things with the electrical wrong and I fixed them. I don't have a problem fixing them. But then this girl walked and she left owing me a lot of money, okay? And it was, you know, it's just not right. And this is the last court case that I've had to be in because I take my tenants and my family. And I think that it's wrong what you guys are doing to some of these landlords. Go after the bad ones. Why us? I'm serious. They're not all bad. And some take pride. The kind of limit your, you know, even if you do this, kind of limit your inspections and stuff like that. Don't, you know, you have safety reasons, but I just don't want to be gouged. I just don't want to. I take care of what I can take care of. I'm just a single parent and I have a disabled son and I'm not using that. I'm trying to leave him something. He's, he, I'm 67 years old and I'm still working and I want to leave him something. He's never going to be able to work, he's never going to be able to take care of himself, but I want to have him a house paid for, so that he doesn't have to worry. I, my life means nothing, okay? People's life means something. I have did check in.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
There it is, there it is, there it is. My name's Thomas Kaliesha, 500 State Street. I'm not sure how to follow up all those comments, other than, I think the biggest takeaway is, is that, you know, we're a city with a heart and I don't know if that's enough, you know? We have to look at what we do with those hearts. How do we care? Do we really care? Is this just what I'm supposed to vote for? You know, where do we find the conscience in all this? Where we, that self-reflect? Where we, you know, get up tomorrow and say, you know, hmm, what if code enforcement came into my neighborhood or the building I'm living in and, and how do I? Not maybe tomorrow, but maybe this weekend, I'll find some time to pull some weeds or, you know? Community standards are kind of what we're talking about here and we're attacking a certain business group. And I, I guess, if we're going to, if we're going to look at all things like this as businesses, we got to look at all things like businesses. And, and I guess we, we, we as taxpayers vote and that's how you guys get into your positions and, and display your level of care for our communities. But, you know, our house isn't very clean right now, you know, as a city. For the last four years, I've been driving For the last four years, I've been driving by the Central Plaza, and we have signs that have not been maintained. We have public spaces that need to be pressure washed. And maybe we have lots of places in town that the city owns that wouldn't pass code enforcement. Where does this conscience play into this? You know, how do we put our thumbs on two things and control things and then not compel the 700 people that work for the city to do better? And this kinda comes down to, I think, you know, some regulations, some checks and balances are always necessary. But we are attacking a very specific thing here when we have a lot of work to do in all parts of the community. You know, it's not just the rental houses. And then we look right past the large complexes and developments. And what I would say, that I can say firsthand, absolute, without a doubt, is that those large complexes in my neighborhood or in other neighborhoods probably present the biggest burden to the community. You know, in October through November, about a six-week period, we had three shootings at River Run Apartments, owned by a large conglomerate out of state. They own over 100 properties. And I wondered to myself, did Elkhart fail them as an investor? Or have they failed Elkhart as the second or third investor downstream? So how do we regulate these things? You know, three shootings, whose fault is that? We only had one homicide, though. Not sure if we solved it, or we could put a finger on it. I don't have much else to say, but we need to clean our own house, you know? Open our eyes up, you know? Look at the places we travel in and say, hey, maybe I should report the 3-1-1. Maybe it shouldn't, just 'cause it has been doesn't mean it should stay the same. And I'm a very observant person, and my eyes have been forced to be open. And, you know, I see things in everyone's community here that represents us, and we're looking the other way. We absolutely are. And worst of all would be my newest neighbor in the fact that I've had to report a non-for-profit who's taken millions from the city. They've had weeds four feet tall. They have trash falling out of their dumpsters. These are, this is an investment group for low to middle income that has complexes all around the town getting money, and they're not maintaining their property to a standard that we would all agree to be a minimum. How do we put our thumb on anybody if the people getting money aren't following a minimum standard? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Name's David Wickstrom, 53630 Ash Road, Granger, Indiana. I paused for a long time about whether to even speak because I'm not sure that you guys are hearing what we're saying. There are, you know, there are a number of issues. If we're gonna add one person to do all this stuff that isn't being done in this whole city, how's that gonna get done? You talk about Goshen, their inspections. We read about it in the paper all the time. They can't take care of the people that are bad actors. And I personally have had a friend, and I've been present in the inspections, and it's not enforced equally. He was held to a higher standard, and he met it. That's good. But I believe that the reason I spoke is before, you say the reason for evil to persist is a few good men saying nothing. And we're saying stuff, something, and it depends on whether you listen to it. We all want good standard houses. But I hope that you would use the tools in your toolbag to enforce what you have before you start adding other layers of bureaucracy. Nobody wants someone to be injured. People are injured in homeowners' houses. People are injured in owner-occupied houses. So why is one different from the other? I have, I have a number of letters, and I didn't even contact all the tenants. And all of them said, we don't want somebody in our house invading our properties. My landlord, which I don't like to call dad, I like to be called a housing provider, takes care of it. If we have an issue, we call him, it's done. So if we can't take care of it with what we have, how are we gonna take it by adding another person to the payroll? And I would like to have answers tonight. And I hope that we could postpone this. I'm hoping it's not going to be a said-and-done thing tonight because you need to get the people in the community, the tenants and the landlords, and see what we can do to make this better. I have a spire right here, and it isn't near what you guys are talking about doing. And again, it was set. If it passes tonight, and you say there's gonna be two pages down from eight, you don't even know what you're voting on, so I don't think you can really vote tonight. You can do whatever you want, but I don't think it's a very wise thing to do. And I could go on, I don't need to bash other people. I haven't mentioned names. We all can, we're smart enough to drive around the city and see things that need to be done. Homeowners, rentals, city property, business property. There's a lot of things that need to be done. Let's start from ground zero. And please, please, involve the people, involve the people who have a stake in it. We care. I care about my tenants. Some probably don't. Go after them. If you can't go after them, no. You know, they said that the registration is so they can find out who the owner is. All you have to do is elkhartpropertydeck.com. You can find out in seconds who owns the property. Last time they did it, they realized it didn't work. It was done unfairly. They singled out people they knew that would take care of the problems and not the ones that were problems. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? If none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Return it back to the council floor for council discussion. Council discussion. Mr. Henke. You're next, Alex.
I'm gonna run through a list, and I think some of us, or maybe one of us, did a lot of homework, made a lot of calls, still getting a lot of calls, still wanting to provide safe housing. I was a landlord for 37 years. I had homes in Goshen. Sorry, sir? I had homes in Goshen, and I think they brought the registration in 1988. And it was used more as a way to clean up and get the city. Mine were on a state highway, and the state didn't get involved, and the city didn't want involvement, and they wanted to obligate me to move a garage so a trash truck could go through after the house had been there for 60-plus years. I sold out of Goshen. I wanted nothing to do with them because of their government. That was 1988. We can talk about qualifying different things. I had one house fire. My homes were historic homes and riverfront properties, not cheapos. They were done well. A duplex, 1456 Hudson, had a fire at the lower level river walkout. The tenant went upstairs to borrow sugar, got involved in conversation, left the stove on. And I got called to go over, and it was a total loss in that lower unit. And the stove still had a melted burner on, so you could pretty well tell what that was about. I'm assuming that was about 2012, 2013, somewhere in there, if somebody wants to look at it. Again, I had a police action after a house, 1415 Franklin Street. I renovated the nursing home for $1.6 million. And the house across the street was a known drug house. And I ended up buying that house and put $68,000 in the renovation of it, trying to clean up the area. Wasn't many years thereafter, but the police department came crashing through the doors. I was the registered key holder with rental registration at the time. They not only busted through the two steel doors on the lower unit and realized, wrong house, they went upstairs and busted the doors off the frame. Didn't find anything there either, and busted on the garage. Over $10,000 of damage. I turned it into my insurance, Cincinnati Insurance. They canceled my policy, refused to pay because it was a police action. So I had to go to a different insurance agency for one house. I got tired of this stuff. I sold out three years ago. I had to write off over $110,000 of court action, things that I should've been able to collect on. Never will get it. You gotta find the people. They have to have jobs. They have to have a way to pay. I had to write off all of that money. That people really don't understand that part. If you think landlords are rich people, I'm wondering why more people aren't landlords? Become a landlord. Take the risk, invest the money. Do what you gotta do, like the rest of them did. The summons and the court systems are anti-landlord. You can get all the, you know, courts to tell you that this tenant owes you money, but the collection is a whole nother thing. Local lawyers got out of the business because it was, you know, you collect based on your ability to collect from tenants, and it wasn't happening. So you'll notice, nobody does that anymore. Or I'd like to have them. I still have 14 claims open. Landlords and entering properties. There's state laws on that area. And landlords just can't come willy-nilly into your property. That's a privacy issue. That's state-regulated. If there is declared an urgency or emergency because of utility or safety, they can enter. But I always called my tenant on their phone. I always left a card at the table and let them know I was there. When people talk about they go down the street and they noticed this or noticed that house, how do you even know that they're rental comparison to private ownership? How do you know? You really don't unless you do... I've gone down Eden Street. I've gone down Prairie Street. I started taking pictures and publishing, and I will continue to do that. I've called these houses in for years. Just not their code enforcement. I went along with Mayfield, and he said, well, we let that guy alone on, the name of the road right behind Franklin. I owned a house at 714, I don't know what it is. Anyhow, the neighbor's house was a ministry. He said, well, we let him go. We just don't look at that because he helps people. He gets girls off the street and only charges them $10 a night to stay at his house. Well, that's a zoning violation. You can't do it, aside from the trash. So there is picking and choosing, I gotta tell you. And we can talk about discrimination. I have felt that as a landlord, the discrimination of being the wrong party at the time. And I used to get calls. It just so happened that the mayor at that time was a Republican. And Pat Porter, who was in charge of code enforcement, would give me a heads up and say, hey, the mayor's obligating me to go look at your properties again. We know that part. It's a target. So let me go this way. I don't know how to determine rental from private ownership. I could make a guess, but I don't really know. I don't know that people have really understood, and that's what I was trying to say the first time before being cut off, that we do have a human relations commission. Taxpayers pay for that. And we're one of 12 Level 2 cities in the state of Indiana to have them. It's not obligatory. But if that is not working, we ought to get rid of that department. We have code enforcement. I've written letters from my first time in office, 2001. I've written about code enforcement and the problems when I first came to office. I've sent them to every mayor since because it's not fixed. Dick Moore, bless his heart, even said that he was gonna develop a whole new plan for code enforcement because it was inadequate. We never did get that. We do have city and small claims court for tenants and landlords alike. We do have a city taxpayer neighborhood coordinator. We have a communications director that I just used recently to help someone with their dispute. And Alex got them to the right place. All the taxpayers' expense, however, and yet another position with another layer because what we're doing isn't working. You know, we talked about Section 8 housing. They already do inspection HUD programs. They already have the inspectors' list. Tenants should inspect before they move in. There's a history of that property. We do have landlord Facebook pages that we can rate tenants and try to shoo away those that just have left us in the hole. I had a property, a duplex, and someone picked up a mattress off the street and brought bedbugs in. It was $3,600 to heat treat two units at that property. Who paid for that? Yeah, that was me. You know what I mean? That was years of profit to pay for bedbugs, which I had an obligation to do. Insurance inspections. My insurance company inspected my properties so I could continually insure them. Fire department will inspect. If you smell gas, call the fire department. They inspect for free. And again, they're a taxpayer entity, but that's what they do. NIBSCO inspects. Gas, electric, they will come out. I've called them. I do believe that there are things that we could do and could do better. If 3-1-1 isn't catching a lot of this stuff, then you have to question the expense and put the money towards the inspector and to qualify that person to get it done. I recall when, before Rod's administration, Parks was looking terrible in the city of Elkhart. They were just bad. Overgrown everything, and rusted fences and stuff. And this administration has picked up on, and you look at our parks now, by all means, but we're talking a budget increase of $3 million per year. And so every improvement comes at a cost. I think that's a lesson to us all. There's going to be a cost. For this gentleman, Bradley &amp; Company, that is the realtor-manager for that property, according to this regulation, if the property manager is a real estate professional, they are exempt unless there's an inside complaint. Well, they are exempt then because they are a real estate company. That's what Bradley Company is. And the only way that you can get action then is to call through code enforcement. You can call the city and call Alex, and he'll direct you to all the right departments. But we already have all that stuff in place. I do know that code enforcement has been complaint-driven for years, and that's unfortunate. As you can see, stuff, I take pictures now. Is this gonna be my monthly thing? I think Dave Miller used to have the top 10 list. He used to publish the worst top 10 properties in the city of Elkhart and put them right on the front page of the newspaper. Embarrass people into doing the right thing. You shouldn't have to embarrass them. We have systems for this. There's over 40 laws and codes defining what proper housing is. And everyone should be using them accordingly, and everyone should be held to the same account accordingly. I'm totally behind that, whatever that means. The retaliation, we talked about. I think we need to tell tenants why rents are going up. It's another layer. It's another fee. They went into an agreement with you. Indiana doesn't obligate us to a lease agreement. So if there's stuff in the lease agreement, mine was done by Bill Cohen. It was 18 pages long, and I still lost money, even though I won in court. Never collected. So I talked about the police action. I do have Johnna King, state representative, talking to Todd Rakita in regards to rights and violations. She sent out a pretty good notice on Facebook in regards to the concerns. I hope that we are looking at that because I'd hate to take city taxpayers' money to defend the city and its actions. I recall, and several of you were on the council when we had a dog bite. And my gosh, we were gonna champion that thing because there was a dog bite. A young girl got bitten on the face by a pit bull. And that meeting, those meetings were nearly 18 to 22 meetings long. And boy, did they go after that dog. And boy, did they go after that dog. And we wrote and wrote and met and met. And you know, today, we don't monitor that anymore. There's more dogs unlicensed.
Councilman Henke, just can you circle back to rental inspection?
I'm just saying, we, we can write all this stuff, but the follow through. I'm making the similar comparison because we were hot and heavy on that dog ordinance and we didn't, it doesn't matter anymore. So I'm just suggesting, guys, I know this is a done deal, I get it. I think there's a bigger issue than rental registration tonight. And that's First Amendment, the right for people to voice their concerns because we're taking your money. You fund this government. So anybody that shuts you down, that's a bigger issue than any rental registration. And we should be holding those accountable for derailing the democracy we're supposed to have.
Thank you, David. Alex?
I just wanted to offer some praises for the process. You know, a couple of speakers talked about the democratic process and it is wonderful when it works. I'm sure that whatever happens tonight could probably be improved and better. And I hope that the lines of communication continue to flow in both directions. I learned a lot at the committee meetings that we had the last, I don't know, couple Mondays. And I just wanted to, again, thank who I think are honorable and diligent landlords for educating me about past programs that were similar, you know, and some of the shortcomings that they thought were in those programs and what they anticipate coming with this if it does pass tonight. But I just appreciate their being willing to give up their time and educate somebody like me. And I, I find them to be very honorable and diligent. People who came tonight speaking in favor, you know, there weren't as many that came for the subcommittee meetings, you know, for whatever reason. Very eloquent and again, very clear. Thank you for being here. I want to thank the administration because frankly, I was earlier today vacillating a little bit in my thoughts and through working with them, you know, they helped me get more comfortable with the ordinance and also the, the forms that will be involved. So thank you for that. I also want to thank the city council, harvest, tough meeting sometimes to run when you got a contentious issue. So thank you. And Aaron, you did a nice job too with the subcommittee meeting. So again, I appreciate the process and how it's gone and the leadership. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. One thing that I like to do when I look at important and contentious issues like this is not only take everyone's public input into account, but try to look to see if ordinance is similar to this had been repeated elsewhere, not only in the local area, but around the United States and if any data had been gathered around those. So if you'll be, give me just a little leeway here to go through a few of these studies that I found related to rental inspection. One was mentioned earlier in Rochester where it found that strong code enforcement and regular inspections were critical in maintaining lead safe housing without adversely affecting the rental market and that rental inspections improved tenant health outcomes. Another study in 2015 by Klein, this study found that this, that tenant complaints were not effective in reduction of health-related housing problems and suggested that routine, frequent inspections would likely improve housing conditions and health, including asthma and other childhood respiratory outcomes. A study in 2018 found that inspection of high-risk rentals can positively impact housing quality. The study recommended expanding proactive rental inspection systems as a way to promote healthy housing and reduce health disparities. Two more, one was in 2022, found that current complaint-based enforcement was insufficient in ensuring healthy housing. They called for stronger inspection standards and proactive enforcement to hold landlords accountable and reduce asthma disparities. They highlight how robust, robust rental inspections are essential for equitable health and safety outcomes. And lastly, another study from 2022, found that low-income renters were disproportionately impacted by serious housing concerns and that only one-third of tenants saw their issues resolved by landlords. The study revealed that renters often lacked the resources or powers to get repairs made and feared retaliation. The study concluded that relying on tenant complaints alone left many health and safety issues unaddressed. The study recommended strengthening rental inspection policies and proactive housing inspections. So when I, when I look at studies like that and when I hear from tenants and when I hear from landlords, I don't think anyone in here tonight was in favor of poor housing conditions or creating an environment where people suffer. And I think that we see that throughout different industries and businesses in our community around the United States. You know, if you have a food truck in Elkhart County, every year that costs $225. If you have a beer, wine, or liquor license, that's $1,000 a year that you have to provide the county to make sure that you are setting up to standards. Now, to go off topic briefly for a second here, I'll bring your eye back. You know, I served in the military for eight years. And in the military, we have what's called a PT test. Now, a PT test is the bare minimum standard that you have to have to be in the military. Now, if you are great at PT, then you don't have anything to worry about. And I know the vast majority of landlords in here, they don't have anything to worry about. And this ordinance and the administration have all came out in favor of working with landlords to smooth out any issues, to make sure that both property owner and land, and tenants are respected and safe. So I just want to say that as of now, you know, I am in support of this ordinance, but I look forward to continued cooperation and conversation with both landlords and tenants as we navigate through this process and find the best outcome together. Thank you.
Mr. Curry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just like to say that I've lived in Elkhart all my life. And I live here by choice. And I've had opportunity to move around town, been to everybody's house, everybody's rental property. I've been there because of the occupation I had. So I know what has happened. And you know, I think these are good discussions. You know, I hear from people all over the city calling me. It's just not the people in the fifth district that call me. So I've heard from a lot of tenants, I've heard from landlords, I got friends that's landlords. I was a landlord for 20 years. It wasn't for me to continue, but there were certain things I did when I was a landlord. I made sure all the neighbors knew I owned that house. Because see, there are some bad tenants. And they knew to call me if my tenants were violating the noise ordinance or had a barking dog all night or just doing anything that the homeowners next door didn't appreciate. But they knew to call me because I gave them that information. And that's something I hope happen going forward, that we work together in these neighborhoods. And it is a concern that when, even in my neighborhood, people own these houses in our neighborhood, but they, we don't know who they are. They don't live in our neighborhood and they're renting these houses. And we've had some challenges and we have a good, solid neighborhood association where we invite people to come speak to us. We had one landlord since 2007 say, I'll come speak to you because he wanted to build some commercial space in our residential neighborhood. And of course, the resident said, no way. We're not going to allow that in our neighborhood. But he did come speak to us and we appreciated that. And you know, people talk about time, time, everybody's time is valuable. You know, we take the time to meet to make sure our neighborhood is solid. We, we always talk about at our neighborhood association meetings, and we had one yesterday, that if we let our neighborhood go down, it's hard to bring it back up. And I can show you some neighborhoods that went down, not necessarily in the city of Elkhart, but close to our, our city limits over the years. And it's going to be hard to bring them back up. You got to be careful and we have to work together. But when I hear people come to this meeting or any meeting and say our city is not this, our city is better. I'm not going to buy some of the stuff I heard here tonight. Our city is better. Thank you, Mayor Rod. Our city is better. And I've been here to see it over these years and we have a lot of things we can be proud of. And when I was a landlord, an ordinance like this would have helped me. I had some bad tenants, I got to know Judge Rick Coffwell because, and but, and this would have helped me because I could have said, I passed your inspection. There was these violations, I didn't cause them, they did. And it's on record that I passed your inspection. So you know, I think this is a good thing. It's going to help us work together and going forward, I think we should all want to work together. And it's not that expensive. I didn't make a lot of money in the rental business because I didn't have high rents. When I listen to people complain that a lot of our homes is because of high rents, I wonder, is that the case? You know, I know what the big tenants are charging, the big, and I'm thinking, there's no way I would pay that. I can live in my house much better, eat cheaper than I could with some of these big apartment complexes. No way I would pay for the conditions there. And some of them take decent care of them. The one that was spoke of today, it's, it's definitely went downhill over the years. It used to be one of the nicer places to stay in Elkhart, but it's not now. I talked to the manager because it's in my district and she assured me that there's going to be some changes made. There's another apartment building that I, she turned around over the years. I swear, if you turn this one around like you did that one, okay. But yeah, we have to watch them too. We have to watch everybody and make sure they want to have quality homes and safe places for everybody to live in our city. But I think, you know, this would have been something that I would have welcomed, but I guess most people don't see it my way. But I just appreciate everybody coming because it's good to have a good discussion. Thank you.
I'll try not to reiterate on, touch it on what Alex and Brent and David and you out there have shared because I had the privilege to be on the council when it was, we had this similar ordinance, which was renters registration. This is rental inspections and some of the content in this is different. There are some similarities and it is a process and a discussion. And just because we're not present at committee meetings or in maybe your neighborhood or in contact with you does not mean we are not engaged, we are not reading our minutes or our notes and, or getting, having conversations with people that may be here tonight, may have written something, they have called us. It is a process. And no matter what we do, how we do it, we are not going to please everybody at 100%. But I know this is, but we, if I'm not mistaken, and you guys can correct me, I believe we asked the administration, we as a council individually, because of input, whether it was from landlords, tenants, friends, family, in regards to the quality of life and living conditions that some people that are renting are in. And we asked the administration to look at this again. Am I correct? I can stand to be corrected. So that's a part of our process, how we even get to this point to draft a ordinance. So I appreciate the administration working with us as a council and then with the community, with the landlord, all the stakeholders, that this will affect indirectly and directly. What I do know, we were thinking about was safety, being proactive, and this is not to punish anyone. And when topics mean something to you and touch you in your back door, emotions rise. And, and you, you see that amongst us, we're human. And it happens with you when you're coming before us and the things that you're saying. But I have to believe, all nine of us, despite party affiliation, we may have philosophical differences, but all nine of us are looking in, from a lens that what's in the best interest of all the stakeholders in the city of Elkhart to bring quality of life to all people. And some of our landlords, I don't know about those that are here, don't even live in our community, but they're providing housing for our people that do live in our community. And I appreciate that. We appreciate that. So I will be supporting this and this is a living document, meaning we can revisit, we can keep the conversation going. There's things, you know, we, we, it felt like criticism in regards to, we, you know, it's been said, we don't know what we're voting on. One thought was, well, this is what came out of it. If we shrink it now before people see it, what message is that sending? So it's just a matter of perception of when, how you're looking at it from what lens. So it is not our intent to not continue to conversate regardless to the head shakings or you might think, well, she never talks, I don't see her. We may not be in the same circles, but trust me, this is for the people. We will continue to keep this dialogue going and we hope that you will continue to be a part of it. Thank you.
Grab tree. I'll admit, when I first got this, I wasn't exactly sure which side the fence I was going to land on. I, with that, I had to do some thought. I did my research, I talked to people. And I still kind of was, which way do I want to go? But it was something that said tonight that kind of hit the light. It's go with your conscience. And I seriously cannot allow renters to go unwatched. I've been a renter, I'm a homeowner now in the city. I've seen some deplorable situations. I've seen great situations. But for me to go home tonight and vote against something that I know that will protect those who don't have that chance, I could not move forward. So I will definitely be supporting this. Is it perfect? I will be the first one to say no. But as my council members, council member said, it's a working document. If something doesn't work, if we keep seeing a hitch in the system, we will come, it'll bring it back and we will fix it. It's not going to be perfect. I don't think there's any piece of legislation that will be perfect. It's a working document. But right now, this is something I can support and I will believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Ms. King?
Thank you, I'm sorry. I am in support of this. And the main reason is when the young boy passed away. I was at home when 911 was called and seeing the police and fire, I didn't know what was going on. And I stayed out the way and then when I found out later what happened and when I went around the corner to see the house where the unfortunate incident happened at, that particular house was a church we used to go to when I was like nine, eight, nine, 10 years old and it was vacant for years. So what kind of work, wiring or whatever was put into that house to where it was not up to code, it was not safe, where people, you know, passed away. And that's one of the reasons, one of the main reasons I am for, for this. And when I look at the checklist, everything on this checklist is everything I need to do to maintain my house. So why would a rental property not have the same standards for someone else to live in? Why? And if my grandkids, they don't live here, but if they came here and if she, my daughter had to get an apartment, I will want this to be part of the checklist for me to even agree for her to look at. Carrie, I would rent from you, I can already tell. Okay? And, but if you can't put that love and passion into property, and I get it, it's a business and you're going to get crappy people renting, I understand that. And just like with me being in business, I'm certified as an insurance agent, I get crappy customers. I understand. And sometimes I'm weeding and I tell people, ah, I cannot write business with you because I already know. But it's just the nature of the business that we are in, we have to pick and choose. And sometimes you can't pick and choose, especially with rental. But I am supporting this and in honor of the young man who passed away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David?
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying. The church that was renovated to be a rental property, the city would have had to inspect it. The church that was renovated to be a rental property, the city would have had to inspect it. It should have come to a variance hearing, it should have been through a zoning process. There's already a city process. I will tell you from experience, at the fire at my property, the tenants upstairs and downstairs disconnect the smoke alarms, simply because, you know, the toaster goes off, the popcorn goes off, and they, I can't inspect that every day myself, but my lease agreement said they will maintain the smoke detector. Later on, I hardwired them, but you know what? They got out of that too. Found a way out of those people. So you can't really save everything in a one-time inspection. People are going to be human, they're going to do what they do, whether they bring animals in, whether they burn candles, whether they leave lights on, leave the stove on, all of those things truly happen. But I think a gentleman spoke about a real critical piece. This, this, we're talking about a business, and this impacts the livelihood of all these landlords like it's nothing, like they have so much money that this will not affect them. This is the livelihood of most. This document was a copy, cut, copy paste from somebody else. I looked at them through Bloomington, Indiana, several Indiana places, and they're not to this depth. But if we're going to reduce this to 25%, that's a huge reduction, and we don't even know what the end result is going to be. So I'm just surprised that some are willing to vote blindly without having all the information in front of us and the local impact. I would have liked to have Mayor Wood and, you know, Mark Brinson or somebody from Goshen come and speak to us with regard to their statistics, because it's not what we are finding. Goshen had Ron Davidheiser, and Ron Davidheiser, all those years, they had rental registration and they ever could get him into court. We had Marshall, and we never got him in court either. He lived out of state and really didn't really care. Landlords are smart enough now, because of some past history, that they're putting companies and LLCs, and I knew a local guy that his company is listed in California. So good luck with the chase because of past performance. They felt like they had to do something to protect themselves. I have significant questions, and I'd like to have seen us exhaust current laws over obvious properties, because if the outside looks that bad, I'll guarantee you the inside looks worse. Start there. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that when a council member is not at this council meeting, all these meetings are on WebEx. So this, Aaron and David and Brent were part of a committee, and those other should have, though the rest of us could watch it on WebEx. So it's not like, like this council meeting right now is being watched by I don't know how many people. I'm basically for this because, some of you may or may not know, but I grew up on the South Side of Chicago. I come from a family of 13 kids, so my mom and dad had to rent. So when you got 13 kids, you don't always get the best properties, you know, and I saw those. So I know what a bad landlord looks like. Lo and behold, I go to Goshen College, I rent some properties over in Goshen. I'm thinking, you know, this is, this is Mayberry, this is what, this is what it ought to be like, you know, when you rent a place. I currently, yeah, I'm the only one on the council right now that's renting. I actually rent, and I started out to rent for just a couple of years because I was going to buy a house, but then I got to renting, and my landlord, I would say this is probably one of the best in the city. I mean, he's on top of everything, his property's an A1. So I talked to him about this ordinance. I said, hey, we're getting ready to introduce this ordinance, and what do you think? It's a rental inspection. His response was, it's what, it would work for me because I'm going to get more attention to my property. People are going to say that my property is inspected, it's certified, and you want to live in one of those properties. And that's the kind of landlord he is. And I believe that's the kind of landlord most of you in here are, you know? When you say you're in a triple lease three months, you know, I mean, that's, that's, you're going to get a good tenant, hopefully, that does that. I mean, we had to do, just in a background check, we had to do a background check, we had to do a co, I mean, a credit check, you know, a police background check, just to get the apartment, which was, which was okay, you know, because of the quality of the place that I have and the quality of landlord that I have. And I wish that everybody would have that type of landlord where I can call him, you know, at home, at work, and boom, somebody's there taking care of the problem. And that's what we're trying to introduce here, to ensure that people have that. And I understand that everybody has to live somewhere, and people talk about affordable living. Affordable living is where you can afford to live. So where that is, I always start, if, as a landlord, a good friend of mine, Johnny Thomas, God bless him, would always say, "Every place I have, I would live in," you know? And I think that should be the standard. If I'm, if I'm the landlord, every place I have, I will live in it because I know the standard of life I want for my clients. And I hear that from a lot of you. Are there bad tenants? Yes, there are bad tenants. I believe this administration is working to make sure that landlord has as much rights as the tenants do. Is it subjective? Yes. Is it a moving target? Yes. But like, like we said earlier, it's a working document. You know, it's something that the Health and Safety Committee can look at again after so many months of inspections and say, hey, this or that needs to be updated. So I'm faithful that the administration and the person we hire will see this come to fruition. So Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish. Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
Motion from Mr. Mishler, second from Mrs. Hines, for third and final. Angie, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-10, an ordinance establishing a rental inspection program for the city of Elkhart, Indiana. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke. President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. We're going to take a five-minute recess here. Reconvene? Reconvene? Angie, would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-11 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-11, an ordinance appropriating $95,000 to provide initial funding to implement the Elkhart Rental Inspection Program.
I get a motion in the second to adopt this ordinance. I got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mrs. Hines. Council discussion. Thank you.
I think we can forego the discussion since it's a predetermined vote, so we can move on with it. Thank you.
So you didn't have a question?
Councilman Hanke, point of order. I will remind all council members that it is against council rules to impugn motive on any council members. Thank you.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, sir. It is against council rules to impugn any motive.
Now, when I get shut down by the chair, that's not impunity as well?
Nope, that's the chair's prerogative, because I'm the chair.
Yeah, yeah, we'll find out.
Thank you very much.
You are a disgrace to a democracy.
Councilman Hanke.
You've been on the council 20 years, you've never been president, so.
Gentlemen, point of order.
From day one, you've been disgusting.
Thank you very much. God bless you, my son. Is there any, I want an audience who would like to speak with regards to this? Now returning back to the council, council discussion, seeing none. Angie, would you do a roll call vote?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
A motion from Mr. Fish.
Second.
Second from Mr. Crabtree, for third and final, would you read this by title and do a roll call vote, Angie, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-11, an ordinance appropriating $95,000 to provide initial funding to implement the Elkhart Rental Inspection Program. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanke.
No.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes eight to one on third and final.
Thank you. Would you, new.
Nothing table.
Table of ordinance, table, ordinance of resolutions, new business.
We have a resolution.
We have a resolution, sir.
Yes, you do. That's right, the one you want to read in its entirety.
The one I'm reading in its entirety, yes, sir. Thank you for the heads up.
If I get a motion in the second to adopt.
Some of.
Resolution.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, would you read it by, in its entirety, Angie, please?
Proposed resolution 25-R-13, a resolution of the Elkhart County Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, acknowledging Peace Officers Memorial Day, May 15, 2025. Whereas the police officers of the city of Elkhart and the peace officers of the city of Elkhart officers of the City of Elkhart and the peace officers throughout the United States serve their neighbors and communities without regard to the risks and dangers presented by their public service, and whereas on January 3, 1791, Councilman Darius Quimby was killed in Albion County, New York, marking the first known death of a law enforcement officer killed in the line of duty. And whereas, to date in our nation's history, over 24,300 law enforcement officers have died in the line of duty according to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. And whereas, on May 4, 1963, President John F. Kennedy signed Presidential Proclamation 3537 declaring May 15 of that year and all 16 years as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And whereas, on October 15, 1991, President George H.W. Bush dedicated the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, D.C. And whereas, on September 13, 1994, President Bill Clinton signed the Violent Crime Control and Law Enforcement Act of 1994 into law, directing the flag of the United States on all government buildings to be lowered to half staff on May 15 of each year. And whereas, as we approach May 15, 2025, it is fitting to honor and remember the five police officers of the City of Elkhart who lost their lives in the line of duty. Officer Willard S. Burton, October 27, 1888; Officer Orin L. N. Schelmendine, February 9, 1920; Patrolman Henry W. Wentz, December 13, 1924; Patrolman Douglas Michael Adams, March 20, 2001; and Corporal Michael L. Swiger, December 29, 2009. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of Elkhart, Indiana, that the City of Elkhart acknowledges May 15, 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day and remembers the law enforcement officers of the City of Elkhart and throughout the United States who have died in the line of duty. So resolve this fifth day of May, 2025.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Council. Dan Milleney is chief, Elkhart Police Department. Obviously, this is a very serious resolution when it comes to the service of the police department. And I want to take an opportunity to invite all the council members. We're actually going to have a memorial service this Friday. We kind of had to move it up to the week prior because our honor guard, the availability, having the honor guard there to provide the service for them. Several of our members are actually going to be attending the national service in D.C. and actually representing the City of Elkhart and the Elkhart Police Department on a national level. So we're very honored to be able to have them take part in those ceremonies. So we moved it up so they could participate this Friday. And so you heard the five names that were read. And obviously, that's a very sober reminder of, you know, the calling and the responsibility and the great sacrifice that the officers of the Elkhart Police Department do. And I think my personal opinion is by the intervention and grace of God, you didn't hear January 27, 2025 for two officers that passed. While it was tragic, that's another reminder of how close our officers come to paying that ultimate sacrifice. And one of the things that I think is sobering, again, as we talk about this evening, is there was a lot of debate and a lot of passion tonight on a lot of free speech. And there's a lot of protection that goes into that and allowing us to be able to have a constitutional republic and a democracy, government, model government to where we can say that they can have those things and those protections civilly here in our country, that protection comes from the police department. So kind of a great reminder of the ability for us to be able to provide that service to everyone here in our community that they can have the freedom to have those things and to say what they want to say and to have those opinions. So and our officers literally will give their lives to protect the others here in the city, and they have. So I'm not trying to tell you anything you don't know. I've received nothing but support from every single person on this council. I appreciate you. I appreciate what you do to support us and the men and women of the Elkhart Police Department. And I would really be honored if you would want to come out Friday at 5:00 to the memorial service there. It would be great. Love to see you. Yeah, right there, the police memorial and right across there on Nitco Parkway. So it'll be, it'll be right there. And again, sorry, central green. Sorry, it was their last year. This year, we're having it central green. So, sorry. Central green, yeah. Sorry, it was at the police memorial service last year or at the memorial last year, but this should be in central green. So if you can come, that'd be great. Thank you. Any questions or comments for me?
No, I'd just like to say I'm going to be out of town. Won't be able to be there this year, but we're definitely, my family are police supporters. You know, I'm Speed's favorite nephew and...
That's what Michael says.
And growing up with the first black police officer from Elkhart in our family and living across the street from Marshall Hill, the second black police officer, and living a couple blocks down from Billy Robinson, you know, you grew up knowing these policemen just like family almost. So, you know, you know they are people and understand that today's policemen are people and you know that the ones that we know the best from the Neighborhood Association was first we had Officer Tweedy. Everybody know him. We haven't seen him lately. He's still around?
He is, actually. He's a lieutenant and helps run the Criminal Investigation Division.
But he taught us a lot on how to look out for our neighborhood and Officer Winbigler and not Winbigler, Winmiller.
Yep.
And also Officer Bias. You know, they've, everybody that come to the meeting know these officers well, and I just think it's good when the community know our officers.
I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Angie, would you do a roll call vote? What else in the public want to speak?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
All right. Other new business? Any other new business? Mr. Hanky.
I'm going to have a disagreement with the chief, which is not normal, but it is... I just find that it was a sad day for Elkhart, and it's not because of the passing of the rental registration and inspection, but it was the process that made it happen. Limiting freedom of speech and the First Amendment is first for a reason. I mean, everyone should be entitled. And with that said, I think we trampled on the very people that we're supposed to be serving. It doesn't matter that they have a different opinion, a different understanding. They have a right to say whatever it is they want to say. But limiting anyone to speak for any bias on any topic is simply the wrong thing to do. And I wish that we would be more receptive to opposing opinions from all of our constituents, regardless of where they come from.
Thank you. I just want to thank the city for doing a great job this past weekend with the Cinco de Mayo celebration and everything that happened downtown. You know, we had a lot of great things happening in the City of Elkhart this past weekend. We had Derby Day over at Ruthmere, which I was lucky enough to attend for the first time, which was very fun, as well as enjoy the celebrations downtown. And if you look downtown today, you can't even tell how many thousands of people were there. And I know I just stole what Councilman Dawson was going to say, but our Buildings and Grounds crew and everyone who works in that regard did a fantastic job. Thank you.
Any other new business? Yes. I need to remind the council that there's a certain decorum we have, all right? We have a parliamentarian who institutes that decorum. We also have the ability as a council to censor any of our council members for not following that decorum. I feel like I've been very patient in doing so. So outbursts of that nature will not be tolerated going forward, especially when a parliamentarian steps in and clarifies what the situation is. I want everybody to be clear on that. The council also has the authority to remove under state statute a councilman from the council. So we don't want to go there, but what I'm saying is those type of outbursts will not continue to be tolerated. Thank you.
So the point of order, sir?
No point of order.
When you use your bias to set some...
Report of the mayor, borderworks, border safety.
...that's why I intend to have you sued through the Attorney General's office.
Councilman Hanky, you're not recognized.
Is there reports from the border, mayor's borderwork, border safety? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience on the privilege of the floor that would like to speak?
Good evening again. I guess just kind of, interestingly enough, that these meetings are so early now that we don't have time to eat.
Thomas, I don't mean to interrupt you, but you still need to state your record, name for the record.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Angie.
It's, sorry, excuse me. Thomas Kalizia, 500 State Street. Not sure where to begin, but you know, decorum and these things and whatnot, you know, it's easy to have a perspective, but we all have to kind of put the shoe on the other foot. And, you know, interestingly enough, these things happen and of no accord to me, but you know, here we're reading a declaration and you guys are eating a snack. So where does that fall into decorum and point of order and what should be being done? And is it the outcome of having switched the meeting time, which was for 7:00 P.M. for years, and you guys had time to eat before you got here, and now we're eating during the proceedings? So we all have to put the shoe on the other foot. We have to look at the coin from both sides because at some point, maybe the coin falls the other way and we're guilty of something that someone else was guilty of, and we had a problem with that one, but now we're supposed to ignore our situation. And that leads me to the next thing. I really, I really feel passionate about this, you know, and I have the receipts because if you go back to 2005, when I purchased and invested in this city and look at my address over the 20 years, Google Maps gives me receipts as to what I've done to improve my address. We just have to get other people to do the same thing from time to time, check themselves, say I could do more, what didn't I do. It's just a human process. And when we put the blinders on and start passing out ribbon cuttings every week and participation trophies and all these things, we start telling ourselves we did a good job, and that's just human nature. We stop, we stop looking at ourselves in the mirror. It's a very dangerous situation. And, and that's all I'm really asking is that we ask everything of everybody. It's like continuous improvement. We need everybody to continuously, you know, look in the mirror and say, could I have done it better? Can I do more? Should we rewrite this? It's tough. And I'm going to directly speak to some of the comments regarding the rental inspection. And you can be, you can have the best tenant in the city.
Sir, respectfully, new privilege of the floor is for discussion of ordinance, like things that aren't, haven't been previously discussed.
Am I allowed to speak on ordinance?
Oops. If it's not something that we talked about today.
Oh, okay. So we could have the best landlord in town, and due to the blinders or the assumptions that things are great and couldn't be better, they could still not be to today's codes, ordinance codes. They could still have dumpsters and alleyways that aren't necessarily the best thing in lines of sight to our central green. We can always do better to make the city look better. And when you can see alleyways from central green, I don't know if trashcans should be visible. So every situation in town could be under scrutiny. And like most people, we don't say things because we don't want repercussions. So I'm going to say it right now. Hopefully, I don't have any repercussions because I'm no different than a rental property. In fact, we are all renters of the city because if we don't pay our property tax, we are no longer renters. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, return it back to the council floor for Neighborhood Associations. Mr. Curry.
Yeah, the great PM Moran Neighborhood Association met yesterday, and it was another good meeting. And we had Officer Bias there and Adrian Riley was there and the new 3-1-1 coordinator, Isaiah Murray, was there. And as always, we discussed a lot of things about upkeep and having a nice neighborhood. We discussed a little bit about rental properties that we're concerned about and turned them in to Isaiah in our neighborhood because they are the problem in our neighborhood. And we also discussed, you know, the house that got hit last July. Those people still haven't moved in. And we discussed coming together as a neighborhood on our neighborhood cleanup day to go over and kind of do some weeding and stuff to bring it back up to par because it's been sitting empty since that tornado. So they've had some problems with insurance and a contractor and I guess some water pipes busted. And so we're going to go over and that's, that's going to be our cleanup project that day to kind of welcome them. They're from Chicago and we want to welcome them to Elkhart. So we're going to clean that up. And like I said, it's always good. And we talked about the tornado a couple months ago and being ready for a tornado. Somebody suggested that we should have a whistle. If you're in the basement and your house was knocked down and you were trapped in your basement, you need a whistle. But anyway, Officer Bias brought us all lanyards with whistles. And it said something about supporting the police on these. So everybody was happy to get those whistles at the meetings. So it was all, like I say, it's just always good to meet and talk about making the neighborhood better and make sure it stays stable. Thank you.
Any other Neighborhood Association reports? Thank you. Seeing none. Any committee meetings to be scheduled? No. Acceptance of communications?
Some of.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Mishler that we accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Could I have a motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.